Bears varsity football team for being, becoming the state champion for the first time with their twenty-one to seven victory over Lincoln and San Diego. The game was played up here at Sequoia High School just this past week.
Wow.
So congratulations to them and I understand that there is going to be a parade the second Saturday in January with some ceremonies at Burgess Park. So now for those of you who would like to attend that, that would be great. And I know that there's been a reach out by the superintendent as well as Ray Mueller from Menlo Park for all the council members to come if it's convenient for them.
To the chairman?
Yes.
You mean the principal of M A C O?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and then can I also add to your memorial service for Kathy Hughes? Is that a group of residents who have worked with her over the years are trying to put together a memorial service in January? And it looks, a target date, it's not firmed up, is the January thirteenth. But plans are being made to honor her in this terrible situation. So just wanted to make that mention myself.
Thank you, thank you, very appropriate, thank you. Okay, let's have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have draw call please?
Councilmember Lempers?
Yes, I am here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I am here.
Vice Mayor Degolia?
Yeah.
Mayor Whitmer?
I'm here as well. Okay. I think for the presentations part, it's come to our attention that people who are appointed due to the cancellation of the election need to be sworn in and so.
Correct. He county elections official recently, or I'm sorry, December said certified the election results. So he sent out the certification of election for the appointed council members. And those three council members are Michael Lempers, Degolia, and Bill Whitmer. So they're officially certified.
I had to do that last week. Swear for the full year term. I state your name.
Yes, it's up to you.
No problem. Raise your right hand.
Yes, raise your right hand.
You did this.
I state your name.
I, Whitmer.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance?
That I bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of California?
And of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
For purpose of evasion?
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully give charge? Introduce the promise I'm about to enter.
Okay, we've had no closed session. Oh, first off, I'd like to see if anybody wants to make any public comments. Forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Irving Panetta. I'm HIPHousing's new community outreach specialist. I'm sure some of you in here might be familiar with HIPHousing and our work. But just a quick, brief overview. We're a nonprofit organization. We've been around since nineteen seventy-two. And we provide affordable housing and home sharing services in San Mateo County. And we do that through our home sharing program, which matches people who have a square bedroom in their home that they want to rent out with folks that are looking to rent. Our self-sufficiency program, which is basically magic. It's a scholarship that we provide for low-income parents. We help them pay their rent while they're going to school, anywhere from one to five years, depending on their career track. And then our property development program, through which we purchase and rehabilitate affordable housing properties throughout San Mateo County to make sure that there is affordable housing throughout San Mateo County. Each year, we have a calendar contest that is open to children in San Mateo County from kindergarten through fifth grade. And folks submit pictures that they draw about what their idea of home is. And to honor your support of our organization, I wanted to present you with our 2019 calendars. So I believe I brought enough for everyone. And thank you so much for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's one of my favorite calendars.
Oh, perfect.
Any comments by council?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
This is art. Fine art. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, then I guess we'll close. Public comments, there was no closed session. So we'll go to the city manager's report. There we have the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we have the written report for you. Staffs here are answering any detailed questions you might have regarding that during my one-on-ones with the council, there were a couple of questions related to police response times and the recent burglaries that we've had in town. Police chief's prepared to address those issues if the council would like.
That's a good idea.
If I could on that, just, I think I raised some of those. And it's not, and it's not just the burglaries. I have the perception there's been a sort of uptick in town generally over the last couple of months and if you could just address that as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's that time of year. It's not uncommon during the holidays that we do see an uptick. Property crimes, mail theft, which we have, package theft. To combat that, we've continually put out news slices and information to the community, tips to take care of that, making sure that you're using your alarm system and lighting and reporting suspicious activity to us. So in response to the burglaries, there have been unfortunately fourteen, starting back September twenty-sixth. The most recent was December sixth in Glenwood. Ten of those are residential burglaries. Three were construction sites. And one was Encinal School where they broke into the computer lab. I, it is, I am able to say that we have a strong lead on a suspect from the crime at Encinal, which we're hoping may in turn lead us to other suspects for the burglaries in town. There does seem to be a particular method of operation to the residential burglaries, targeting those that each and every one of those homes, the majority, if the dark alarm systems were there, they weren't activated. And we're looking now to see if there's any connections between lawn services or domestic staff or others, because it just isn't normal for someone to come into our community, the large properties, and just happen to know where the bedrooms are and others. And so we're linking that. We're also leveraging our geofencing that I think I spoke a few meetings about, using cellular technology to see who was on that property at that time. It's pretty labor-intensive. Sometimes we won't get the best cooperation from Google, but it's becoming a great tool for us. But again, no suspects. And from a patrol standpoint, I think, Mr. Arg, just to let you know, we have put out overtime shifts. We've been leveraging our reserves. We do, putting them in those areas at those times. There is no real area per se. There's six in Lindenwood, a couple in Lloydton Park, a few in West Atherton, and then a few up on Walsh Road and Reservoir Road.
Response times?
What is the question about response times?
It seemed to, of course, we get a snapshot, it's not a full year, so it's tough to compare year on year. But it looks like over the last several months, it's been escalating to longer numbers, bigger numbers. And so we just could talk about that a little.
And I guess that's why I was asking for clarification, because I'm not seeing that. I have a report that shows the twelve months, the last twelve months, the first six months of the year, we had an average of, this is for priority one, and priority one, not to confuse, it sounds like it's the important, but it's the calls that we, we need to get there, but it isn't license, siren, emergency. So the average response time, first six months of the year was just over five minutes. And for the last six months of the year, just under five minutes. And I can tell you, fortunately, we do have low response times with that, with our emergency call, license, siren, over just over two minutes.
So just to clarify, in George's report, it goes back to May, so that's all we see in this report. And it starts, it's in the four-minute time and then the last, you know, September, October went up into the five-minute time.
And there can be varying reasons for that. It could be time of day with traffic. I'm not trying to make excuses. It could be two officers handling a call, one's holding. I can tell you that we have not had one complaint about a response times. Quite frankly, the reverse. Can't believe you're this quick, can't believe you even came for this call. Across the country, larger areas, emergency code three response times can be double our priority one response times, that meaning waiting ten minutes when you have an emergency. So I'm proud of our response times. I'm saying, I don't see an issue with it. And you will see anomalies, you know, throughout the months, based on different things. But we're hovering, you know, five minutes and under for a call that's, we don't have to get there right away, but we're getting there.
Perhaps we could just have a chart that shows the twelve-month rolling average or the rolling?
Yes.
Number?
We can actually put our two six-month reports together and you will have the rolling report.
Chief, can you just clarify, priority one response, obeyed traffic laws versus a code?
Yes, so false alarm and it isn't addressed alarm and we get those all to someone. It's still a priority for us to get there and check, but we aren't going to be, you know, going through red lights and having traffic yield. It just doesn't, we can't, I can't justify that.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief?
What I heard you saying, please correct me, I don't know if it works, but specifically regarding burglaries, it sounds like there's two, there's two, I'll use the word rings potentially operating and then. Well, yeah, they're saying there's something that's going on, there's two individual things that are going on.
We think so. So for the, for the residential burglaries, it appears that we do have the same either suspect or suspects. The construction site burglaries, no connection, that's an easy target. And then Encinal, it's the first time, well, I've been there a year and a half, first time we've had a break-in at a school. The alarm system actually went off at the school. We did respond. It was a false alarm at that time. Couldn't find any entry or any breakage. And then they believed the next day or the day after, it was discovered that they had broken in. So I guess what I'm here, what to tell you is we're doing everything that we can. We're leveraging the crime analyst resources that are available to us from the county. We've done some good mapping. I think we have, you know, we're putting people on and monitoring and tracking. And again, appealing to our residents to make sure that it looks like someone's home, use those alarm systems, and report any suspicious activity. Yes, sir.
Great, yeah. So I know that over the last couple of years, we started a policy of having residents register, those that wanted to register their cameras, so that you would have it accessible for forensic purposes. And I don't know how many have been registered, but maybe this is a time to publicize these burglaries, to encourage more people to register.
Yeah, and it is one of those things, first thing that we look for is do they have cameras? And then we also then are suggesting cameras, because the wireless systems are so inexpensive and they're very, very accurate. We did get some video footage from a recent mail theft, but not enough, unfortunately. It's always that grainy or you just missed the look or couldn't get the plate. But one thing about our, our residents is they are hyper vigilant and they are always telling us when they don't see, see something that's wrong, they're calling us and letting us know.
Any other questions for the chief?
Chief, when we spoke yesterday, you mentioned that often our police officers always, as they're out and about, and they see packages left at driveways in front of gates because the delivery boats can't get beyond the gate. What do they do with them?
Well, it's very standard for us and I've done it myself. You can tell it was a set of golf clubs that's been delivered that's leaning against the gate. You ring the bell and I say, hey, it's out here, here's your police chief, I got a package for you. Or we get it over the gate best we can, because that's just inviting. It's the same with when we do our, what we call our code fourteens, our vacation house checks. And we do those twice a day, every shift, literally going to the residence. I've done it myself. We walk the residence, picking up newspapers, anything that's showing that, you know, it's, it's uncollectible, we throw those things over, because it's inviting that someone's not there. Okay. I appreciate the fact that you're paying attention to that stuff. It makes, lets me know that you're interested and I appreciate Dr. Henry speaking.
Any other questions for your board?
Number three in the staff report has to do with the Caltrain business plan. And it's good that there are going on the January ninth study session. We're going to go through that, because that question came up at the presentation that Caltrain had of the station the other night. And, but reading through, it's the last sentence of your report on that topic that, I mean, it's, you guys understanding that this, Senator, there's legislation that he's trying to put through. But should this legislation move forward, it could affect the single-family residential development around the station? And if, if the station remain operational as it is, depends its draft. So I think that is what is driving all the questions that you are asking us to consider about whether we want to continue having a transit stop. I mean, if we didn't have the transit stop, would they still have the authority in the legislation to essentially take our property and maybe us do a transitory high-density development?
I don't know, I can answer that at this point. Given this, with this legislation, it doesn't look like it. But they could modify it to address bus lines and there are transit stops along El Camino.
Right, so I think that this statement is a little hyper, maybe exaggerated, because there are other transit lines, bus stops, as you say, that go along El Camino than if that were part of the legislation in transit, in development.
That's part of this legislation, yeah, but it could be another legislation.
Well, that's something that we would have to look at.
Just, just a clarification, the legislation wasn't meant for people to take the property.
Right.
It's somebody would buy the property and then your land use policy couldn't stop them from developing. But it wasn't someone taking the property.
Well, in a sense, it takes away your residential only overlay.
Land use policy, yeah.
Right, and that, that was my way. I don't think that the state's going to take that and domain of property. But a developer would buy their property and then they're going to develop a seven-story high-riser. And that's not something that I think happens very often. So I think it's good that we're going to work at that. And I, I'm going to challenge all of our council members to study up on all the various questions that were posed to us. I think Kiri had a big hand in, in scripting some of those. And I think there's no questions that need to be answered also. It's a Christmas and New Year's homework.
It's a teaser.
It's a teaser. There you go. And then I have one more. And I have one more, how do you do with the water capture project? And maybe I should wait until we, but it's not the water capture project. But I just wanted to find out why in your section nine here, that timeframe is so much longer, it seems, for the E R and this and that and I think that we could lose that two-point-two to three million dollars in funding? When if we had just put the capture project apart, it seemed to be a much more streamlined timeframe.
We own that property. We don't own the private property yet, so there's a longer public process engagement and development agreement process and everything else that has to come into play.
It just seems exceedingly long.
It's something I've been talking about for a while.
No, I know you have, but I mean, just that it just seems to have kind of really pushed itself out there quite long. That's all the questions that I have to start with.
Any other questions? Go to your report. Okay. There are your community organization roundtable reports, so we'll move to the consent calendar, which is item eight through ten. Do we have any council members that would like to remove or have comments on any of those items?
We'd like to call item ten.
Anyone else? Is there any members of the public that would like to call any of the consent items, which are items eight through ten? Okay, seeing none. Why don't we talk about item ten? What?
Well, why don't we approve the consent calendar and then go back to ten, because we will.
Okay, that's fine.
And move to approve items eight and nine of the consent calendars?
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
All right.
opposed? No, okay. Item ten. Great.
Okay, so item ten is asking us to approve the single respondent to an RFP that we put out for a sum of a hundred thousand dollars to look at a green infrastructure plan. Which is, which is, which satisfies the requirement of the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board to address the dirty water that is delivered to the bay from the Atherton Channel. I think we, as a municipality in the Bay Area, have an obligation pursuant to the requirements of the Water Control Board to clean up our water. And one way to do that is to build these green infrastructure areas along the roadway, like you see on Emily. I, that's the only place I really know where it's been done so far now.
You mean Sacred Heart?
Yeah, which Sacred Heart did.
Yeah, no, I, I see. Just let me, I know I'm kind of where you're going. And I'm not taking it, your thunder weight, but.
There's no thunder.
Okay, but in San Mateo County, C K is very involved in helping cities do the street improvements that capture water along their, their, like between the, instead of having a land, just a landscape berm, they have swales and lands and stuff like that.
That's what we have up on our.
Yeah, well, anyway, yes, I, I know. I walk it, but go ahead, because I have.
I don't know what was your point.
No, that it's not just, it's just not San Mateo County, it's entire state.
Oh, I understand, but I think we're responding to the requirement of the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. And that's why we're considering this, I understand that.
And up, up from there, National Pollution, the China Innovation System, Water Act, etc.
The staff report doesn't talk about up from there, the staff report talks about.
The Regional Water Quality Control Board gets their, and.
Okay, so I had, I think two things about this. One is, when you put out a bid and you get one respondent, it's not a good situation. And we, we had an experience in June that kind of highlighted that. And we don't know if a hundred thousand dollars is competitive or not, because we can get any of the respondents. But that's one point. The second point is, if we do the water treatment plan, then that's going to treat the water that we're dumping into the bay that comes through the Atherton Channel. And that, seems to me that that in combination with our, the requirements that we have in our building codes, which is to take water off of any hard escape on a newly developed property, and this has been true for, I'm not sure how long, but about ten or more years.
Ten more.
Yeah, then, then we're, we're capturing that water and treating, you know, and providing that it has to basically be recharged into the aquifer. And the third thing is we're implementing, assuming that we build the civic center, there's a whole bunch of storm treatment related to the civic center that is green capture. So I think it's, I, I would rather wait to commit to a hundred thousand dollars until after we see what's going to happen to the water treatment plant. Because in fact, that may materially change what has to be done and maybe a lot less has to be done if we have the water treatment facility. So I'd rather put this up than act on it now.
Yeah.
So I, I have two questions and one comment. But since Councilmember Degolia had questions and comments about it, maybe I can kind of combine in the same way. So my question was, has this consultant from C D and A worked with any other jurisdiction in the region?
The answer to that is yes. Right now, they're actually under contract with, I believe, both Belmont and Hillsborough in helping them with their development of green infrastructure plan. And for Hillsborough, I think their land use policies to support the green infrastructure plan.
And it seemed odd to me that we only received one.
As noted in the staff report, we tried an extensive outreach effort to get respondents. We published in trade publications, so that they were advertised on boards for the engineering firms. We solicited directly from several, from several consultants, as well as advertised it on our website to try and get respondents. I'm going to say that the timeline for the development is rather short. A lot of jurisdictions have already started this process. And with the deadline of the end of June for adoption, a lot of the firms are already working on multiple jurisdictions. And we've got, we've gotten several responses basically saying we're too busy right now.
That was my assumption, because I know that we, we have waited a whole long time for this and we've been talking about it. I think the first time that Councilmember Lee Stanile were at Lewis Cities and this was brought up, it was like, oh, my gosh, that whole state was going nuts. We really don't have to do this. Well, I had some of the same concerns that, you know, this seems like a lot of money and everything. So I reached out to Matt Fabry, who is on staff at C K, and he was the water, stormwater guru up there. And I said, Matt, you know, is this something that we really need to do? So he, bottom line, he goes into all the reasons why we should, but he said, that being said, I strongly recommend councilman Ford with developing a green infrastructure plan to ensure that the town remains in compliance with the municipal regional permit. He says that our water retention project is going to help us collectively in the county in terms of load reduction. And we'd likely significantly reduce and or eliminate Atherton's individual operation, right? If we were forced to go with a difficult population-based reduction of monthly C Ds instead of working collectively as a county. That's what we're trying to do, to work collectively as a county. But, you know, I think our back is against the wall of the particular, we really need to, you know, dollarize across our cities and go forward with it. Because I said, do we really need to do this in light of all the things that we're talking about doing? And, you know, he says he strongly recommends it. And he's not a, well, he's a government employee, but he's not a bureaucrat. He's so knowledgeable. So there could be fines and other kind of penalties if we don't. That's my question.
My question.
Yes. Could I ask, I'm sorry. I just have a question, I guess, of Mr. Connor. Are we required to do this and if we don't do it, what are the consequences?
Well, we are required to do and have a plan in place by the end of June. And the penalties, we actually don't know. And here's why. It's part of the N P D permitting plan that circles the bay. Our part is we have to have a plan in place. We don't have to have a water capture facility done. We have to have a plan in place. Then a year from that, you have to show some implementation, something going forward. The problem is, if we don't have the plan, they can do whatever they want. The problem is, if we don't have the plan, they can do whatever they want. Now, fees, fines, we don't know. Here's the problem. The MPDES permit is something that comes from the federal government, and it implements the Clean Water Act. The violation of the Clean Water Act is ten thousand dollars a day, generally speaking. And the city of Los Angeles, when they got up around fifteen or twenty million dollars in fines, said, tell you what, we'll expedite, we'll do all these things, we'll, we'll be the Boy Scouts, and, and they reduced the fine. I, I can't say what they'll do. Now, at the state level or the regional level, they also have the ability, interestingly enough, I think as George outlined today to you, they can come in and say, no more development, no more fixing houses, nothing, until you comply. And that's because of the, the low-impact development standards that have to be addressed in your plan. Now, we have some things in the building department, but it's not in the planning side of the equation. So we don't know what they could do. We know that if they wanted to be punitive, they could be very punitive. We don't know what it will do to the MPDES permit, you know, if there's seventy-five jurisdictions and we're one of three, guess where they're going to focus? So I, I can't say do it, don't do it, and I understand, you know, the hesitancy, but especially if, we haven't done any public outreach on this new site, and if, like the last time, there's a huge public outcry and you end up walking away, now what? We don't have a plan, we don't have anything started, and now, as Councilmember Lewis points out, we're really up against the wall. And I think this, if you think of this now, wait till everybody's up against the wall. So I can't really give you anything definitive other than there's possibilities.
Harry, you got something?
Similar to what Mike was saying, so just in clarity, even if we had things in the pipeline that could mitigate our overall green infrastructure plan, we still wouldn't have a plan, so therefore we would still be a violation of the requirement as of June?
That's true.
Yes.
Okay.
So can I go?
What is the definition of a plan?
The permit actually outlines all of the requirements that are required in the plan. You took the first step towards the adoption back in December of last year, when you adopted the framework for the development of the plan. And so that starts out with the basis of where we're moving forward from. It did mention the water capture project in there as one of the implementation measures that would get us to meet the goals. The, as the city attorney mentioned, the requirement is to develop a plan that outlines how, over time, the city is going to disconnect its infrastructure from direct discharge into the bay. It's an outline of how we plan to do that. We're also required to update any policies or ordinances regarding development or other things that are impacted to make sure that we can implement the plan. One of the drivers of this plan, and one of the things that we really pushes it for us, is right now, most of the development that we have in town is single-family residential, which is exempted specifically from the permit. But in the permit itself, it says that this plan is being required in part as an alternative to expanding the definition of regulated projects to anything that creates or replaces five thousand square feet of impervious material. And so that is something that we need to be cognizant of, because if we don't implement, one of the things that the board can do is expand their definition of a regulated project, which is something that we need to be concerned about.
Mr. Mayor, if I can be more specific, because, good question. The, I have here the San Mateo County Green Infrastructure Worth Plan. In it, they identified summary of required elements, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them. These are the state requirements that we're implementing, the federal requirements, and there are things like, we have to identify and prioritize, we have to prioritize project locations and time for us, complete a project tracking system for green infrastructure, guidelines and specification, integration with other plans, evaluation of funding options, and the county must adopt policies, ordinance, and other appropriate legal mechanisms to implement. If we haven't, if we don't have a plan, we can't implement it. So there, I mean, there are things set forth that are required, and as you pointed out specifically, there really is no identified penalty, comma, yet. But if you don't, now you're in violation of the MPDES permit, which could have Clean Water Act penalties and a lot of money.
Who did you have a question?
Well, I, I want to make a comment on that, because in a lot of instances, we are already doing a lot of the green infrastructure things that if we just wrote, wrote it down and put it in a plan, I mean, the thing about the five thousand square feet of impervious surface on the residential, I mean, that, we've been doing that. I mean, if you develop a property and you put more than five thousand square feet of impervious surface on your property, you've got to put a water detention trench in your, in your yard to, with pipes, you know, drainage into it. That, I mean, so we take that policy that we've been doing for, I know, twenty years, twenty-plus years or so already.
Yeah, so in the plan, we can outline the things that we've been doing, the things that we require.
We're future doing with this.
And what we would require in the future, the thing is that, in addition to just detention, there's stormwater treatment that's part of that development requirement, so, and that's not one of our things right now.
I just don't know why it's going to cost a hundred thousand.
Yeah, as a follow-on to that question, it would be, to me, since we're doing a lot, and since we have plans to do more, we have the water capture facility, I realize there's a long way to go on that, and it may fall through. But we also have plans here for the civic center, which is, are going to be quite substantial. We, our permitting process has, has a substantial amount of green infrastructure items in there. So to me, it would seem that, I understand the deadline, and I understand the need for doing something, but I just don't understand why it would be a hundred thousand dollars and why it wouldn't have been something closer to thirty thousand, for example. I did, there's no science in how I calculated that. It just seems like it's all-
Well, when we originally got the proposal, it was roughly ninety-nine thousand and change. We, staff reviewed the proposal and had conversations with a consultant, and were able to reduce the actual contract amount to ninety thousand. We believe that all the elements are required to meet the, or it covers all of the requirements that we have to meet our obligation. What we're asking for is a contingency amount on top of what they have in the proposal to cover any additional things that we may need to, to cover.
All right, well, why don't we see if there's any public comments, and we'll bring them back for final comments here. Are there any public comments on item number ten? Professional services agreement that's essentially due to the bidding was a sole source for a hundred thousand dollars to develop a green infrastructure plan. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Back to council and final comments before we take the vote.
So if we were doing the water treatment, does the plan include identifying locations where, along our streets, for example, where we would put in swales and other green infrastructure?
It, it would, I, I think that we're probably going to have to go into two tracks. One is, if we're able to implement the water capture facility, what does that mean and how much beyond that we will have to do? And identify some potential locations where things fit easily, that we have control over right-of-way and other things, as well as additional implementation measures that we can kind of pass on potentially to others, rather than us doing implementation. You and the planning commissioner will have some options in terms of other implementation measures that can be done to meet the requirement at a lower cost to the town. That being said, is that I think we have to, as Bill mentioned, identify some potential projects, some locations that we can implement. Again, it's over the long term, they're looking at a horizon all the way out to 2040 for implementation. So it's not, the plan doesn't say you're going to do this now, but you may have certain triggers, so for example, if we're reconstructing a roadway, that comes, that would be part of that project.
But my, but my question is, if we were doing the water treatment facility, then I, I guess I have an assumption that we would need to do less of the other. And if that's true, I don't see value in us paying a consultant to design all of that for us. That's part of the problem.
I have a rebuttal to that, because I think the problem that if we don't design it ourselves and put it in a plan, that if we, we do a road, I'm going to take Polyhundred for an example, in front of my house at Emily. There is a river that runs through it every time it rains. It gets four feet wide and two feet deep, and it runs and drains to El Camino, to the sewer. Now, would that be a nice project for some kind of a swale system that we would want to design ourselves and make a proposal? Or do we want the state or the county to dictate how that design would be? Because I've seen some designs that they've done in Brisbane and San Mateo and Oklahoma, where it's not very pretty along their roadway, that there's, they've got curbs and gutters and stuff.
Wait, the state came into a residential community and designed a road change?
Well, they, they installed these swales, these green drainage swales.
In the residential period?
But it's along the streets, they've got more commercial than we do. We don't have any commercial.
Case rested.
I know, that's why we need to have, have control of it.
I think, I think part of the, the challenge of basing our compliance solely on water capture projects, that hasn't gone through a public engagement process and a proper process first, could put the council in an awkward position.
But, but George, I, I actually have one question. I know that we, you know, we're part of the consortium, you know, for the drainage with the county. Is there going to be any filtration of harmful elements out of that, or is it purely just going to be flood control?
Downstream or upstream?
Downstream. Downstream. If we're capturing the water, we're part of an operation, and we're funding an operation, even if it's downstream, and they're, they're filtering the harmful elements out of the water before it goes in, we're paying for part of it, that's part of our commitment?
The, the type of water quality improvements as part of that are rather limited. They will have some screening elements for the diversion structure, so you will, they have, water will still continue to direct discharge through flood slough from both the bayfront canal and Atherton Channel. It is when the water elevation rises, because the tide gates aren't able to open due to high tide, that the water will get diverted into the diversion structure over to the salt pond. And so as part of that, there'll be a sediment trap and screening for debris, but it's not a real water quality project.
And we haven't financially committed to that.
And we have it committed for construction at this point.
Okay. Any last comments?
Okay, so, my thought is, it would be better to know what we're doing with the water project for the board before we do this. I feel like we are being told by the state, whatever, is you have to do this, you have something in place by June. It is the opposite of good government to do something because you're told you have to, to set it out and be able to one bid response at a number that seems too high. I think that's run me the wrong way. I don't see as we have any other choice, unfortunately. So I'm very reluctant about it. It feels like it's not good government, I'm not like us, you just, it's a process, feels truly broken. And so, you know, I think we're likely, I personally would say we have no choice but to do this, but it's not smart, it's not going to be useful to our money.
Especially since it's a sole source.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Can I just, I think you heard a little bit of misinformation that we don't have to do the water project, water capture project at all.
Never seen it.
To, I'm saying, that, that, that's, but that whole concept is part of this. All we have to do, and I'm not trying to defend the cost, all I'm saying is the, what's, what we're up against the law is, is the plan. And the plan is supposed to say, we want to do this, we want to do this, we might do this, and integrate everything.
They'll have to give you, when we had a specific water project facility, they went out of their way to talk about how much more efficient this was, now we're not going to have to have swales, and how ugly they are, and how now we're going to save the day on this. And now we're being told, you know, we got to put a plan together anyway. We're actually, I think this is premature for us, because we're worried the process of solving this problem.
It could be, but just the implementation doesn't take place right away. Most of this stuff, they said you have to show the start of implementation by 2020. And then there's benchmarks, 2020, 2030, and 2040. And so it might be that the water capture plan doesn't have to be in place until 2030, 20, whatever.
I just think we, we will know in six months or something, or five, I don't know, but sometime, where we stand with the water capture facility. And the only reason, in the absence of a law mandated we do this, we wouldn't do it. You know what I'm saying, I think?
I have another question. Is it a requirement that we use a highly-paid consultant to say what we are currently doing? I mean, couldn't we just kind of answer those questions, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and say, we currently are doing this, this, and this, and we will, we plan to continue doing that with the impervious, you know, drainage plant we are working, you know, just from us? I mean, do we have to put actual numbers and science behind it? Is that what the hundred thousand dollars does?
It, it's a variety of things. It's outlining the plan of how, making sure that we have gone through all of our policies to help us implement, as well as mapping, prioritizing, developing tracking tools, et cetera. And if there is a level of expertise that's beyond that, that staff has, as well as the time that staff-
Of course.
-would need to do that.
I mean, just to kind of comply by the June 19th, I mean, can't we kind of do it ourselves somehow?
Well, the only, yes, we can. But in order to meet the MPDES permitting process, it's very specific and it's very brutal, and, and-
With numbers.
You have to say, yeah, you have to say how you're going to get the mercury out of the water, how you're going to get the solids out, you have to tell them in some kind of plan. Now, could we gin something up? It's possible, but then again, they have to approve the plan, too.
Why couldn't we gin something up and attach the whole water treatment engineering report from tech to tech that goes into great detail about how you were removing mercury? And, you know, that's just the plan, we don't have to have it implemented, that's just the plan.
And our building code that says specifically, if you're going to do a, for this project, we have to provide, is there formulas for it?
Well, we have George make a comment, but it would seem perhaps, and I don't know if Interwest, somebody has to do a fair amount of research and highlight everything, perhaps Interwest could do it for half the price, but since they're already familiar with some of our, our ordinances, and they've been, some of them have been here during our discussions on the water capture facility.
Hey, Gordon Beck here.
It's just a comment that perhaps, I mean, you're talking about staff doing something, it would, I would think that that would fall to you to say whether or not you feel that that would be detrimental to other activities, or you think it would be reasonable to do it.
Current staff, I think it would be detrimental to other activities, but we could ask Interwest to assign, or tell, also be to assign additional staff from Interwest to do that sort of report for us. They're, I'm just uncomfortable as a staff person ginning up a response to a statement. I mean, if you directly do that, we're happy to attach those reports to answer those questions, but that's just, it's uncomfortable.
I don't know, I feel like we're doing a lot of it already, and it's not like reinventing the wheel.
And, and beyond that, we have not yet had a public engagement process for the water retention facility at heart field. And, and beyond that, we have not yet had a public engagement process for the water retention facility at Cardfield. That process isn't going to be a positive process. And it's gonna go through the planning commission first.
We're working on it.
Yeah, I, I'm just sitting here and I think that what you're hearing from all of us is is that we're just being, feeling like we're rubbed the wrong way. We're paying $100,000 for a report that we don't believe should cost $100,000. We all, I would say, understand that we have to have, we're required to have, don't like it. We wish the cart was farther down the road, but unfortunately it isn't. And I think that what you're hearing, myself personally, is, I, I agree with Mike, is we're being forced to do a mandate, but we're being forced to do something and to be in compliance. We don't know the implications or the cost ramifications that town potentially would be, and that is a concern. We would hope that all the things that we have planned would mitigate the overall picture is, but we don't know that. So there's a lot of hypotheticals. Unfortunately, the cost is probably rubbing most of us the wrong way.
The only thing I think that we could do, if we wanted to, is postpone the vote on this while you ask Inner West if they have somebody who's skilled in this area that would be here. So we'd have the, we'd have an alternate bid. I don't know if we'd be interested in that. And maybe we have a skinny down version of like, more direct with addressing what we've already done.
Can I ask whether that's possible? Just give them a June 19 timeframe. Are we able to? You're just, you're shortening the window for the consultants? And Robert, how long is their bid for?
Well, it's not a bid. It's not a construction bid. It's a proposal. And
You know, the worst thing that can happen is like the health examiner. You submit it, and then they review it, and they say, oh, well, here, you got it. You're not gonna accept it. You gotta work on it a little bit more. And so you work on it a little more, and you submit it again. And then you submit it again. And, you know, so it's an iterative process. Right?
I think that's right. And during that process, we find out what we're doing in the water treatment facility.
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion that we table this and ask George to do the research?
On second, the mayor's motion.
All right. So the, the motion is, is that we could ask Inner West, we table this discussion.
And we could try and solicit a couple of other proposals as well, but, and we can try and bring it there.
Don't, don't think that we don't have to do this. Just because you don't like the fact that you have to do it, all the cities do have to do it.
So I think we have a
I call for a vote.
Yes, I was gonna do it. Thank you very much. So Harry calls for a vote.
The mayor can't let it go.
You opposed? All right. Moving on to the regular agenda. Number 11 is the Civic Center update.
I gotta wait till he's in the room again.
Hey, do you mind if I escort you out?
If it's close enough, you can run it home.
Yeah, do an escort out.
Shouldn't I introduce myself? I mean, I'm no longer in charge?
No, you're not within five minutes.
But if you moved into that sleep room, it's
Okay, I don't 11, Marty.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. This is the Civic Center update, project monthly update, where we have fight up four items for you to either approve and give us direction on, or just to receive and file. The first one is to, just to receive the cost model manager, which is item number one in your staff report, which, as you see on page two, total to date and projected costs for the project, including about $7 million worth of contingency. We're at $66,554,096. And then that, that's tracking all the costs from day one to now, and then it was projected based on the engineer's estimate in those costs, and with lots of contingency. So that's number, that's in the cost model manager. And I'll stop there and see if there's any questions at this point, before I move on. Is that pretty clear? Okay. Next, like, projects, okay.
Actually, I, I do have questions.
Okay.
So I have, and, and if, if you think they're more appropriate in another section, rather than here, just tell me, and I'm fine to bring them up at any time. But looking at the numbers as presented, I understand your reference in the $7 million contingency. And I see where that is. But my problem is, as I dig through this, the contingency numbers change. Right? There's, there, this section, the first table, references a $5 million project contingency, and the language below the table says there's a $2 million contingency for the $51 million construction. That's your $7 million.
Correct, right.
But then when you go to the next page, there's a table that is dealing with the value engineering selection, and that shows a $2.8 million contingency. Which doesn't
Can I answer that question?
That's not, that's a question. I'm just, at the beginning.
That table's my table.
Okay, but, but one of my problems with this project from the beginning is the numbers move all over the place. And it's so hard to follow because the numbers move around. But then I go to the next paragraph after the short table, the paragraph at the top of page eight, and it references a contingency, at the end of the paragraph, a contingency amount of 2.2 million, about eight percent. So now I'm going, well, there's a $2 million contingency that the first referenced in the first table, $2.8 million contingency in the second table, and now a $2.2 million contingency. And I just can't reconcile them.
So my table that I created was from the cash flow spreadsheet. That was a hypothetical based on the estimated cost, closing the value engineering out, and then assuming the project has a 10% contingency. That was purely for council discussion purposes on the value engineering and where that was.
So that contingency is unrelated to the $7 million contingency that Marty referenced?
The true project cost estimates from the bid estimators, that's in the cost model manager. And those vary based on what part of the project that contingency applies to. So you have a construction contingency, you have an architectural design contingency, you have a contingency for F, F, and E, a contingency for data and electronics, and all of those add up to a bigger number.
Right. It, it's spread out throughout the cost model.
No, and, and I didn't go through it looking at the contingency numbers. I was just, it just varies confusing within the staff report. So that's one of the three comments I have on, on the cost model. Sorry to take the time, but I really looked at it, and it, okay, I'll just bring up the other two, and you can address them. When I go through the cost model, the one thing that just jumped out at me at the beginning, there's two things that jumped out at me at the very beginning. There's the summary cross, uh, cost, project cost report on page 10 of this item. And it shows visu, audiovisual and security costs for the project to $77,000. And that jumped out at me, and I thought, God, that is really low. How do we get the cameras and monitor equipment and what, and audiovisual, which, you know, could be subsent, could be $77,000? How does it come in at $77,000? So when I went to that section, I mean, I could see that it said zero for a security system and library checkout and security. So library checkout, book checkout, that, that is in the library. But I don't see anywhere that it's addressing, you know, cameras or monitoring, which seems like there's an oversight there.
Well, I, I think some of that's actually in other sections.
Okay, well, maybe it
I mean, it's under furnitures, fixture, equipment possibly, or it's in data systems. I mean, it's, I think it's spread out through some of these other areas.
So that's just a label, and I'm reacting to the label?
Right, right.
Something that's spread throughout this whole cost model.
It's all in there. All the costs are in there. This has been double and triple checked by a number of different people. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so here's another late thing, right? I, when I go to page 13 of the report, which is the construction cost. So this is obviously where the big numbers are. And I'm looking at the summary, and I've looked at these numbers a lot, but it just jumped out at me this time. We look at these numbers in the construction, the police and admin building is 28.3 million, which is what the three firms estimate, okay? And that translates into $694.04 a square foot for that building. Okay, that actually, based on things I've heard in the past, sounds pretty good. And then I come down and look at the library, and the library is now estimated at $19,841,000, which, that's where we came to from value engineering. And that trains, translates to $486.42 a square foot. That's a lot lower than we looked at before. And, and maybe this is why. And then you go down to the bottom where the total for construction is, and the total for construction is $48,151.
Right.
And the cost per square foot is the sum of those two numbers, is $1,181. That's not possible. You can't just sum those numbers because you've increased your square footage.
Exactly. It's an average. It should be an average.
So it has to be an average.
Right, it must be a
I never noticed that before, but that's a big number.
Just trying math there a little.
And people really look at what our square footage cost is in this, from a public perception.
I, I had a question about that also. It seems like, how did it go? I thought in one other place, it went up to $1,600 a square foot.
Well, we've been looking at numbers in excess of $1,000, and we're all going, how is this building in excess of $1,000? There are homes that are in excess of $1,000, but they're extremely high.
I assume that they have this on the spreadsheet, and that they just did the sum, and then they just dragged the sum.
Well, these are on the spreadsheet from Mac Five, yeah.
And so
But that doesn't mean there can't be an error here.
It should be, it should be correct.
Yeah, we'll double check that.
Look on page 10, Marty. The summary says, fully devoted, and then the square footage would be like $1,600.
Yeah, so that's the total budget square footage.
Based on 40
And this other is construction cost.
See, I don't think you can
Yeah, just
That includes all the site work, everything, everything, everything.
That is everything. So that's a different cost per square foot than the construction cost, right? So again
But if it's everything, everything, it's only based on
It's not really relevant to a square footage assessment.
Right, but this include is everything that they were projecting.
I don't wanna take time off.
Right.
But, oh, I'll look at it. Prior cost model managers also separated out, and you see it now included. It's separated out to site development costs from the actual building construction costs. So you had a true cost per square foot for the building, and this one rolls them both into one. So that, when you look at the total project.
Yeah, we can break it out if that makes it clear enough.
I know it should, because I don't wanna
So anyway.
Okay, no, we, we can clean that up.
Any other questions on the cost model?
So, no question, okay. So moving on to the project schedule. Pardon?
Elizabeth said
Oh, I knew.
On the cost, the C and A. No, I think I'm okay with that. Two million change order and a 5 million project, and that's for everything. Or that's just the D and, and the
No, that's for everything.
Everything.
Okay.
So project schedule, we're on schedule. That's why we're here today. And item number three is we'll be asking you to approve the plans and specs, and then authorize staff to go out to bid on January 3rd. So the schedule that you directed us in June of last, or this year, through the value engineering to come back by the end of the year, to go out back to the bid, you met your schedule. The library, as you know, behind us over here, that you approved, has been gone. There's just now dirt and put the malt over that. And I think that went very smoothly. That was actually done ahead of schedule and on the price that you guys, you approved. And we'll be exercising the change order to take out the public works building sometime in early January. And at the same time, to take the generator and that trailer away for no additional cost. We're gonna, we're gonna do a no cost swap on that. So I think we've had a, a good plan of moving forward with these things. So the schedule, we're on schedule, so if we go out to bid, if you prove that on January 3rd, we're gonna do a very active procurement process to get everybody's attention that we're out to bid. I know, we already know that there's some contractors that contacting us are interested in bidding on the project. Ovira is very interested again on bidding on the project again. Is to work with Mac Five currently on another project. And WRS, and ourselves, we're gonna be doing active recruitment per se to get the word out about our project, and to get as much interest as possible. Because now we're open to all qualified bidders, not just these pre-qualified that we did last time. And so the bids will be open on February 13th. It's a public bid opening process. And then our goal is to come on February 20th with a recommendation to award to the lowest response of the general contractor, and get this project underway. So are there any questions on the project schedule?
Okay, Rick. So I just wanted to run by you and the council. So we've got basically 41 days between January 3rd and February 13th. And it's, you know, coming off of the holiday is always a slow time. It takes some time for people to get up to speak. And do you think it's realistic, even if you assume the first week is out, that's five weeks? Is that enough time for people to respond to this bid? I know it's a little less complex than it was in June because of some changes that we've made.
Well, we, we believe it's a lot less complex. Because last time we had nine bid alternates, and now we have one bid at, at Council Chamber. And that makes a world of difference for contractors. Because when they have to provide nine different bid alternates, that just boggles, that, that, they don't like that, quite frankly. And then all the demolition of the library and things like that, that's out of pitch right now too. The tree removals
And they know that the staff's gonna be out except for the police department. They know, I think we've made important changes.
We've made a lot, I mean, the council's made a lot of great changes to really clean this project up and make it much more interesting and bidable for. And plus, we're hearing that the market, construction market is starting to level off. And, and that's a good thing for us, because we'll get more people hopefully interested in bidding us. And, and again, we're, we're being contacted by contractors that are interested in bidding about. And again, Ovira and others, we're gonna be actively out there telling people about our project. Once you give the authorization to do that, we're gonna do that. And we feel very confident that, you know, we're gonna have some really good bids come in. We're gonna have pre-bid meetings with contractors. And if we have to have more than one or two, whatever it takes, to get them involved and to get, get them interested. So we're gonna do a lot of outreach to the, to the contracting community to get them involved. But to address your, your, your concern, Councilmember DeGolia, the first go around, we had an eight-week period. And then we only had two bidders, as we know, come in. And, because the one dropped out, they were so busy. And then the two that were left, Hensel, Feltz, Ovira, said, hey, we need two more weeks to look at these plans, specs. If you don't give us two weeks, we won't bid either. So we could, if we didn't extend it by two weeks, we wouldn't have had any bids probably come in.
So we had a 10-week period then?
Exactly.
But we've got half that length now.
We, we're gonna have, yeah, four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, right? And, but, but if we have to, we'll extend it a week or so. We'll just see. We're gonna know what to expect at this point. We're hoping, this is a much better time of year to go out to bid, because now in January is when people start preparing their work schedule for the rest of the year. When we went out last time in, in late mid-March, that was the wrong time. It was a bad time to go out to bid. Everything just wasn't good timing from the last go-around.
I think the vice mayor had a good point, that we've compressed the schedule for them to do the bid. And as, as we were told in the last bid, when somebody said, hey, I need more time, and if you can't give it to me, then I won't bid. Some people will look at that and say, I can't put it together in that amount of time. I think a few extra weeks would allow more people potentially to bid and go through the questions. So yes, I, I can understand that somebody who's already bid this, they now have a good feeling for what everything is. But we're now inviting people who haven't looked at some of these potential new and new and innovative things that W R N S has put in because they haven't built green infrastructures or as, you know, Cal Green standards or other higher standards like for the library before. And so I think compressing it, I understand the need to compress it or the desire to. But I personally think that compressing it is, is, it might be, you know, a little bit.
Like I said, we can always extend it. But I think we're gonna get, um, when we do our pre-conference, pre-bid meeting on January sixteenth, right here, we'll get some good idea how people feel about the timing of it, this schedule. And again, we can always extend it. It's not, that's really not a, an issue here.
I, I totally, I totally agree with Marty that we need to put a reasonable, tight schedule in five to six weeks. Right now, at the beginning of the year, we'll, uh, incentivize the contractors to put their pencils to paper and get the bids in. If we put a long-term bid process out there, people will dilly-dally around. Oh, I've got time to do it, doesn't it? And frankly, they usually do it the last three weeks before it, or two weeks.
Two weeks.
Or when they're sitting in the parking lot. And then they swag it out. And you don't want that. I think that this project, uh, they, a lot of these contractors probably have seen the, uh, the bid cap in the past from last year. And I think that I disagree that we should go out the gate with a long term.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're just, we'll just see what kind of feedback we get at the pre-bid conference and then how things are going on. A, a good indicator is when we get requests for information, the E R F Is, when they start coming in. And we found out the last go around with Hensel, Phelps, and Ovira, those didn't come in till like the last two or three weeks. And then they say, oh, we need two more weeks. Because that's when they started actually looking at the, the bid set.
So the pre-bid conference is on the sixteenth?
Correct.
Of January.
Which is the day before our meeting, I think, from January. So we'll, verbally, we can get an update.
Well, and that, that's why I scheduled it that way.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and if I have to have another one in February or, or end of January, we'll do that. So that, that's the whole idea is to give you an update on that. So anything else on the schedule? So that was just to receive and file. The next one is, uh, number two is authorize the city attorney to review and the city manager to execute an agreement amendment with W R N S Studio to provide rebid services for not to exceed costs of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Unfortunately, Pauline Souza was going to be here to address any questions the council had. Unfortunately, she's, um, her car broke down on the Bay Bridge and she's got a sick kid and she just could not get here today. But if, if I need to call her, if you want to make any changes or have, offer up anything else, you know, I can text her or whatever you want. You know, so, so again, as we say in our staff report, the first go around, we ended up with two bidders. We had two hundred and twenty-seven R F Is. Because we believe with the add of the bid alternates that we had, that made it much more complex. All those issues have been addressed, are in the new bid documents, always two hundred and twenty-seven of R F Is. And now, uh, we're, but we're opening it up to everyone that's qualified. So it could go either way with these R F Is. Normally you have something like fifty to a hundred R F Is. But again, last time we went for a ten-week bid period, we had ten, we, we had two hundred and twenty-seven R F Is. So W R N S and their consultants spent a lot and a lot of time addressing these issues. And the sixty-five thousand dollars, that didn't cover, is what I was told, for the time they, in the consult. Because that, that number, per the original agreement with the town, can't escalate our C P I. And so that number is three years old already that cost to miss. So now they're, it's a guesstimate that they're saying seventy-eight thousand, nine fifty based on what they feel how many questions they're gonna get. Again, if you wanna do anything with that number or not approve it or whatever, I mean, somehow they have to be involved in the process of responding to these questions. We can't do that, Mac Five can't do that. It's the designers can only do that.
Marty, time of materials?
Yeah, I mean, Pauline is open to doing time materials with not to exceed whatever amount. And then if it, if they exceed, they, they stop work or, or get authorization from council to do some more. They're, they're flexible as far as that's concerned.
Marty, would you be able to determine, not just kind of by the volume of questions that come in, how much time they may be having to spend on this so that you get a sense if it's not to exceed, if we're getting close to that not to exceed or if at the end. So when they bill us back on the time and materials, it's a reasonable amount. Do you, do you have this?
It, it, it's, it's one of those things that's hard to, hard to determine because there's.
How complicated the questions are.
Yeah, exactly.
But they should have.
But again, I think because we've gone through this already.
Yeah.
And a lot of this structure with steel beams and your questions and all that, that, that's already been addressed and changed the plans to, to address that.
If it's a hundred, let me just do the math. If it's a hundred requests and it's eighty thousand dollars, that's eight hundred?
Oh, it's your request.
It's eight hundred dollars a request?
So Marty, what, are you?
Yeah, I, I, that's just my question.
It's up to the council how you want it.
It's, it's, when I went over this and I, I spoke to George about it, I just thought, well, okay, we're sitting here, eighty thousand dollars and it's a fixed price, whether there's one question or a thousand. And so.
No, that's not, that's not the way it is.
Well, what, what, well, my point was, is that, um, since many of the questions are already posted on our website with the answers. So I, I would think that maybe for new bidders, they would go there first and they're gonna point that out in the bidders conference. And that maybe the questions are, are smaller. And so that, that's when, you know, George and I had discussed, have maybe time and material with, with a cap, which, which then, if there's more questions than what we anticipate, then fine. But if there's less, then we get that cushion savings. And, and so that would be appropriate. Because we've, you know, we've spent a hang of a lot with these guys. I think we get, I wouldn't say nickel and dime, but I, they have their hand out an awful lot.
Right.
Uh, every time there's something going on, whether it's for a dollar or two. So it, it, we've spent a lot of money and there needs to be some sort of consideration.
Of course, everybody recognized that, that, yeah. But you can, you can do that if you wanna say you're only gonna approve a time and materials budget for whatever. But, but again, the seventy-eight, nine fifty, that is a not to exceed. So if they, it's not a lump sum. So they don't get that no matter, they have to prove that they had, have the charge for it.
This time in materials with seventy-eight, nine fifty is a.
Yeah, exactly.
I didn't see that in the, with the.
No, that's why you did, that's how, how the whole contract is with them.
But it didn't have a man-hour rate or anything, but anyway.
No, we have that, we have that from the original agreement.
Okay, so this is a T N M?
Yeah.
On the seventy-eight?
Yeah. It's, so it's, it's the same way.
Right.
So if it came out cheaper.
Cheaper, couldn't be.
Okay.
So I mean, but if you don't, if you wanna lower the amount from seventy-eight, nine fifty to whatever number, but it's all time, they have to invoice, they should show exactly who worked on what and how mu, how much and how many hours. Those are monthly invoices that we get.
Fifty, and then, you know, if they need to come back and say, look, we're getting, getting more.
As a contractor, I really don't recommend that.
No.
If, if, if they're reputable and honest and they, and, and they're gonna use their standard hourly rates, then the time of materials not to exceed is the way to go. But you think, if you wanna lower the not to exceed, the problem is if, if I'm them, I'm looking at it like, well, what am I supposed to do? Am I supposed to eat the cost or something? And maybe they are, but that's up to you to decide. But whatever you do, the time of materials and not to exceed is, is the best way to go here. Because you will, if there's a shortfall, you'll end up with savings.
See, one of the other things to consider is that the first go around, Mayor, you know, we had an eight-week bid period and then they did, uh, the, the two general contractors asked for a two-week extension. Well, that actually, uh, W R N S is what I was told, they already ran out of money by then. And so the next two weeks, they were doing for nothing. They were losing money on this.
That's true.
So.
Carrie had a question.
I, I just, you know, you simplified it by saying a T N M. Um, with a simple project, I mean, the project getting easier to bid, we would hope that that number, you know, that it's a hypothetical and we don't know what work's gonna come in. But if it's a T N M, we should be safe.
Right, absolutely. We scrutinize these every one.
Should be.
In, in your experience in the past with W R N S, which we've had lots of new contracts because we structured this deal that they had to come in with a different contract each time. And it's been under the same structure, right? Where it's been a not to exceed amount based on their fee schedule, which they gave us at the beginning. Is your experience that they have generally come in at just about the not to exceed amount?
Yes.
So I think fifty thousand is probably too aggressive, especially since the last time, didn't we have a not to exceed of sixty-five thousand dollars?
Sixty-five, seven hundred. Right.
So, and this is a shorter time period, maybe we should just set it at sixty-five.
I would.
I think that's a, that's a good suggestion. Okay, so we wanna have a motion to that?
Well, I think we need a motion for this.
Right, yeah, you need a motion for this.
Right.
Okay.
Before we make this.
Okay, so any other questions? So is there any public comments on this? Seeing none, closed book comments, final comments and, and a.
I got a motion.
Motion.
Okay. Would we approve the contract proposed with W R N S and authorize the city manager to sign it and change the maximum amount before they come back from seventy-eight, nine fifty, sixty-five?
We, just to be clear, because of the way we structured this, they have to come back to the council to get approval for every additional amount beyond that. So is your understanding that we're gonna allow them to finish if they hit that cap and they'll come back? That's what we're gonna do afterwards.
Right.
Now, I think that's fine.
That's what we're doing, yeah.
Right.
Do you need to ask that?
If I, if I expended the time and they.
But you're gonna give me the authority to authorize that and continue work?
Right, right.
And I come back forward.
Yeah, we can't have to stop.
Yeah.
So with that.
My understanding is they've actually done that before where they've exceeded it, like with the trees and stuff, because of things we did.
Right.
So it's not really because of things they.
No, and we didn't wanna stop work either.
No, and we don't wanna stop work, so.
I just wanna make sure that that's.
And I know this is a swag number for them, given that they did a lot of work in the last bid process. But we're shortening the bid process and we know that there's a lot of information out there that wasn't because of the responses in the last bid process. So it seems like a reasonable thing to do.
I think sixty-five is appropriate, yeah.
All right, so all in favor on the bid?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay.
Okay, item number three, Mayor, is to approve the civic center plan specifications and estimate P S E bid documents and authorize staff to advertise for public bids. So we'll need some motion and direction on that.
I have a question, does anybody else has a question?
So what we're looking at is page twenty-four. Which is the, is this what we're looking at in notice?
Right.
In this? I mean, this is all, right, it's with the links?
Yeah, this will be posted in newspapers and all the plant houses and everything, right.
So I have some numerical and some syntax comments. I don't know if I can really do one of them.
You can send them to me.
Send them to you.
Yeah.
There's nothing that changes the meaning of it, but just to make it.
Usually this background section, you don't have in here on these things. But I added that background based on feedback that I got from you and Councilmember Begolia, the P M C.
Okay.
So, and so if you, there's any other tweets you want, I'm happy, I'm happy to hear that.
Thank you, I'll send that to you.
Okay.
But otherwise, I, I'm.
Okay, so, so Marty, um, I think we should discuss, or I'd, I'd like to understand really, when bids come in, they're held fixed for what period of time?
We have extended that for ninety days now. So the last go around, we had bids good for sixty days. Now I added three, thirty more days to that to ninety days.
From the, from the final day that they're due?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. It, it doesn't say that to you?
No, it's not. It's in the, the front specs of that, right.
We have to approve this?
Yep.
Okay, yes, we do.
Yes, we'll need a motion.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to.
Well. Yeah, we need to see if anybody wants to make a comment. Any none?
I'd like to move that we approve the notice and on the bids submitted by staff, subject to some numerical tweaking and that would imply it to staff.
Would you use the language that's in the recognition?
Not a red.
You approve civic center plan specifications and specific P S E bid on these can authorize advertising for public bids?
Exactly.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any votes? Okay, item number four.
And I don't know if Robert.
I'll take the initial lead on that one. So you have a written staff report. We, we talked extensively, uh, one-on-one about tax revenue anticipation notes, which is anticipation. And you've had Urban Futures here, and they're here again tonight. We see they're allowed to provide the council with a PowerPoint presentation, which you have, that walks through timelines, interest rates and, and define C O Ps in France again, power placement funding again for the council. And you've probably all seen that spreadsheet that they helped us put together. I think they did a proper work on that spreadsheet for us. Showing the, the cash flow issues, so you have all that detail. So options of the council this evening is to, to have Urban Futures go through this, most of this PowerPoint with you and first, and then use the Q and A or just jump straight to Q and A. Because we sort of know what the issues are for discussion by the council. There, there is the, the issue of, of, of timing of a certificate of participation as well as, um, the advisory book question that's come up. And the, uh, there's another issue out there, interest rates and things like that, but pleasure of the council. So if you wanna hear the presentation, let us know and we'll, we'll jump to that. Otherwise, Urban Futures will hear your Q and A.
I've seen your presentation a couple times in parts, not exactly the same. But would you like to say again or in the interest of time, you'll just ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay. And if you want to get into that, I will go to Q and A.
So this is.
This is Winksy Fox from Urban Futures. She's been here a couple times and she's here to answer any questions. Again, George reiterated, uh, we, there's been discussions regarding, um, funding and options. And so they're here to help us discuss that, you know. Again, we don't know yet, we haven't, till the bids come in. So this is just preliminary options.
Okay. You have one more question?
No, I'm always the, we had to put it on. Timing this, it's a participation if we go through a lot of C O Ps. Can you give me, give us a perspective? How long, and when to pull the trigger?
So when to pull the trigger really depends on the council. As you probably know, F O M C announced today a rate hike as expected. New range is two twenty-five to two fifty, so twenty-five basis points. They've reduced their production for next year from three hikes to two, although some of the board members still think it should be three. So I think it's, you know, in anticipation of at least some rate hikes, you might consider issuing sooner rather than later, keeping your reserves, have them invested, keeping them for a rainy day fund, um, and, you know, for contingency. Um, and then the other, the other aspect of C O Ps is, is the stretching out longer time. So you're sort of distrib, the theory is you're distributing the costs to residents that benefit from the project over the life. In this case, it's even sure, much shorter than the life of the project, rather than having current taxpayers pay for, for all of it, so. And usually it takes about twelve weeks from beginning to end for a C O P issuance.
Twelve weeks. So twelve weeks from when we decide to do a C O P to when we would have the money?
Right, so kickoff meeting to closing of the transaction. And that's assuming some pre-work of getting the entire team together and. And as your municipal advisor, we could help bid out, you know, underwriter, bond counsel, all the key players, a little bit ahead of that.
In general, when you do a C O P, once you close, do you get all the money, or is it treated like a revolver?
No, you get all the money, and if you issue tax exempt, typical rule of thumb is you need to spend it down in three years for tax exempt status.
Three years down.
Wait, say that again, I didn't understand that, about the three.
It's, it's an approximate schedule, so tip, I mean, you can extend it a little bit, but that's why you have bond counsel on board for tax exempt proceeds. You generally want to issue when you know you need it, so typically, you have a spend down schedule, and so you want to spend down your proceeds within three years or in three years of when you close the transaction. So you have a lump sum of money.
What do you mean spend down?
Use it.
Use it.
Using.
You have to use the money?
Use the money.
Yep.
You can't put it in your bank account, or the interest on it, or borrow from it.
Because of the exemption clause. Of the use.
So you don't want to borrow more than you're gonna use, obviously?
Right.
And you don't want to borrow it now?
And what if it turns out that you don't need what you borrowed?
So you can then start calling bonds, I mean, we, we'd have to put some provisions in there, and I think the town is interested in calling sooner anyway. But there's some leeway, I mean, there's some leeway in there, but yes, generally, you don't want to, right, that's the, you don't want to borrow, and the Fed doesn't want you to borrow on a tax exempt basis more than you need. So, and part of our due diligence is knowing that there is a bid in hand and that it's a reasonable expectation that you will spend this money in three years, within three years.
The amount of money that you would recommend us to potentially borrow?
Will just be based on how the bids come in and the, how much you want to use of your reserves, how much you want to spend down to on your reserves, so we've looked at many different scenarios. But essentially, you want to, you want to borrow enough so that it funds all your general fund operations as expected, it funds the project, and, you know, payment along the way of the debt service, as long as how much you want to leave in your reserves.
So the estimated cost of the project, assuming it all comes in at that, I think that bottom line was about six point eight million.
That's how much you would need, so depending on whether they're premium bonds or not, right now, we're estimating the borrow in par amount would have been about, under six point three for a ten-year C O P.
And so one issue is how long the C O P goes, you could do ten or fifteen years, right?
You can go up to thirty.
And obviously, the issue is we'd have a debt payment for a longer period of time at a lower amount per year we want to offer.
But overall, it would cost more because of the interest.
It would cost more if you were to stick to that schedule, but if you're calling it, right, so then you have a debt service to your call date, so.
And the pre-payoff clause, pretty typical and shorter terms? So for example, the ten to fifteen year clause with pre-payment, or pre-payoff clause, is it typical?
Yeah, so it's still pretty typical to have thirty year, for new money, it's still most typical to issue thirty year debt with a ten-year par call. With elimination of advanced refundings, you're seeing now maybe a seven-year call with a premium declining to par by ten years. Obviously, if you're issuing for ten years, you'd have a shorter call and you will be paying a bit of a premium for a shorter call. And in those cases, you know, it depends on who you're selling to, what the coupons are, in terms of what you're paying in the premium for that option to call early. But typically, you're paying, when you see debt service, you know, you're, they're assuming that your yield to maturity, but if you know you're going to exercise that call option, it's usually good to have that early call. If you're, if you don't know, then, you know, it becomes more costly as you wait outside of that call date.
What sort of premium do you have to pay if you're gonna call early? What's typical?
So you can set it up as a par call, a call at one hundred, or, right now, there isn't that much penalty. Say if you, typical ten-year par call, start calling at seven, then a one oh three, then a one oh two, one oh one, one hundred, that's not too much of a penalty, but let's say you wanted a two-year call at par, there would be a premium associated with that, and it just depends on a lot of different factors.
Thank you.
And that, those are all scenarios we would run for you, to see the different options that you may have.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, so I understand that the typical would be a thirty-year term with a par call of ten years, and there are certain triggers that would require some premium to enable you to do a par call earlier. But is that right?
It depends on how you'd like to structure it, so it's all set when you're pricing the bonds.
The issue that I see is that we clearly need to borrow some money to manage the cash flow, and let's just assume it's seven million dollars. But it's very possible that during this process, we will see some donations come in that would enable us to reduce the amount that we would need to borrow. Obviously, if those donations come in before the date where we close on the note, then we can reduce the amount. But if they come in after we have closed, then we've taken the money, and if we get the donations, we won't need to use them. So we would like to be able to pay that down, and I don't know what the mechanism is for that.
So you'd have to have a good sense of what your estimation and expectations are, because you can't, you know, if you've locked yourself out and you're, you're choosing to have a ten-year call, again, right now, with the, with the tax reform, there's no advance refunding, so you have to wait until within the ninety day window.
If there's gonna be a donation, it's gonna happen, you know, just within.
But you can't call the bonds earlier than that, right?
I, I just, I don't follow your logic a little bit, excuse me, because if we're only gonna borrow like six point eight million, this project is, we will be spending our reserves, our ongoing, you know, revenue excesses for the project, which we wouldn't have to do even if we got the donation and the six point eight million, because we just don't use so much of our personal reserves, and we use the six point eight million of the, of the bond and then start paying that back.
Yeah, these cash flow assumptions, you're spending down to two point one million, which is below, I think, what your current policy is, but right at your mandate of fifteen percent.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, if you got some donations.
Instead of already served.
Can we just structure them a potential early call with a premium? And if we get the money in, then we pay that part off early?
Is that right?
Correct.
I guess something that having a donation will harm the C O P deal.
Well, it may make it unnecessary.
Well.
I mean, and, and I think it's, so I think it's in our interest to take the C O P when we need it, not ahead of when we need it. And we're not gonna need it until October, November twenty twenty, and if it's a twelve week period, then, you know, at the beginning of the twenty twenty-one fiscal year is when we pull that trigger. And we would, and that will give us a year of construction time during which we can seek those donations. So if somebody's gonna do it, then they're gonna do it before that. I mean, you know, we've only seen four and a half million dollars in donations come in, but we've talked about the ability to name a street for ten million dollars, and if somebody came in with that money, we wouldn't need a C O P.
And so the only thing you sacrifice in that strategy is the interest rate.
Interest rates.
Interest rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which are projected to go over the next two, three years.
But you don't want to take the money before you need it.
Right.
An interest rate, it's like structuring your life to avoid taxes.
Okay.
After we all price it now. Whatever legal way we can.
Okay, so are we done with the questions on the C O P? Okay, thanks. So, I would like to bring up one thing. You probably know what I'm gonna bring up, but the C O P.
Is it on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Where?
Is with regards to the C O P, in the discussion.
Okay, you just kind of pointed this out.
It's in discussion. And so, and I spoke with the city manager, and he addressed it in his letter to us. And I've said all along that the C O P, I think there's a lot of good sense for the C O P. I think that there's a need for the cash flow standpoint, and I think that there's a need for excess cash, because as you know, we have the, the council chambers and the E O C, which are alternates. And I think everybody here thinks that, you know, we definitely need to build those, despite what the price comes in at. But there's still the issue of, of public perception of doing this without, without having any input in. And I feel that really, even based on, you know, George and I spoke yesterday, and he put in his, in his note, that we could have a public advisory vote to explain all of this, that we have the money, that we have, you know, based on our projections, but it's a cash flow issue. And that there would be the extra money there to also, in case the Civic Center was there, to do the smart thing to add, to add the council chambers there. And so I do think that it would be wise for us, especially given the timetable, to consider having an advisory ballot measure in the first quarter. And I think that that's applicable to these discussions. And so I would like to have a little bit of discussion on that, because if we don't have it now, we're not gonna be able to have it.
Mr. Mayor, I have to say, we've gotten very tight on what's on the agenda and following the agenda, the law. This is not on the agenda, and there are probably a lot of people in the public that are on the agenda, at least there's some, that might want to come and comment on it. So if we're going to do it, we're gonna have to put it on a future agenda to talk about it, because it's just not on here. I would love to, I'd love to let it go, but it's just not legal.
Okay, well, that's gonna push things out then, did you, okay?
I can't, I can't.
I'd like to see it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Good.
So. You can't talk about it.
I'm not coming on that.
You could, you could put it on the agenda.
I'm in on the topic, though.
Can't talk about it.
I'm just gonna sit like a dog. So, the, the staff report says that the total project cost requirement is of thirty point three million, and that we have thirty point five million in the projected funding, based on the table that you provided. I mean, I've got a problem with that, because that assumes we're not building the council chambers. And if you, if you assume we are building the council chambers and the bids come in at where they're estimated by the three estimators, then we're looking at a project cost of thirty-three million and a.
If they include, if they include the council chambers, yes.
It's a, it's a one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar difference, and there's cash available, assuming the projection, of thirty point five million. So we clearly are one and a half million dollars short, which of course could be made up with donations or a C O P. And we had contemplated previously doing a TRAM, but I understand from the staff report and from the, we, Friday email, that staff has changed its opinion about the desirability of a TRAM. And, and I under, and I always felt like there was some pressure around the TRAM, which you had to, essentially, it was playing a shell game with money, where you took money out and then you had to pay it back within whatever, fifteen months. And then you could take it out again, and then you have to pay it back within fifteen months. And I think the C O P is, I'm comfortable with going the route of the C O P. Obviously, we don't want to make that decision until we see what the bids come in at. But it looks to me that if the bids came in at where we expect, which we have experienced that they don't, and we have the projected funding, we're still gonna need funding to build the entire project. I guess my opinion is that we should definitely use the two point five million dollars of operating reserves, and we definitely should not use any of the fifteen percent reserve. And if we do that, then assuming, then that gives us a million dollars of leeway with the total cost and total projected funding, because I think in the thirty point five, that doesn't include the two point five million of operating reserves, is that right?
The, the six point eight million dollar spreadsheet that we were looking at the other day, where we ran those calculations, the colors turned red, the only turn red went to the two point one, fifteen million dollar operating reserve. So that assumed use of the two and a half. If we're not, if we're going to use the two and a half for something else, then you're probably gonna need to raise the, the C O P.
But I'm looking at the table at the bottom of page four, which is the available funding that totals thirty point five million, and that doesn't include the operating reserves.
Correct.
So, so based on that, I'm, I'm looking at, we actually, if, if we agree that we should use the operating reserves, then we actually have a total of thirty-three million, correct? Which is what the cost of the project, including the council chambers, of projected reserves, would be if I'm right.
And you take the bottom of that last sentence, he said, overall, revenues overestimating base costs leaves a contingency, I mean, I, I don't know contingency around a two point two million, it's not a contingency, it's like a shortfall.
Well, you got that spreadsheet, I don't know.
But that doesn't sound.
You know that spreadsheet that you went down?
I know, that doesn't, right.
Yeah, yeah, but Rick's, Rick's talking about trying to add the.
If you add that.
Reserves to you.
The reserves, and then you had that in, and then you took it out.
The reserves.
I thought you had that in.
You did want it.
Then that's kind of a launch.
Put that up and just walk through it.
And so the only thing that's outlined is the council chambers now, of one point six, but we've always.
Oh, Joe put, or, or, George had put something together, a spreadsheet, when he showed you, but he went down, and if we have.
George did not put that together.
Well, it's a pretty hard way when he.
Robert did. Whole team effort. Robert did it all. Right.
Yeah, consultant, so honestly, okay, so in my little reindeer, we're talking about C O P of six point eight million, but what we're really a shortfall on, if we use all of our excess funds for the next three or four, five years, and the two point one million and our other, two, two point five?
Yeah.
Okay, well, the, only one I saw was two point two, two point two.
Right.
Then all we're really missing, if we put the council chambers in, is that one point six and change. And so where does the six point eight come from?
So the, the six point eight million dollar cash, was for the, the cash flow.
Correct.
And that's using the two point five million dollars in reserve, just on the cash flow, the projections and years out. What Rick's alluding to, though, is just the estimated revenues that we get, projections, right, you, over the next four years of the project timeline, is the thirty point five. If you add to that the reserve of two point five, that gets you your thirty, thirty-three million. And so then assuming that the project cost is twenty-eight, plus the council chambers of one point six, we theoretically have enough money to do the whole project with the council chambers.
We just have cash flow issue.
We just have cash flow.
So, but I think from a public perception, that it's very good for us to have done the value engineering and ended up with a project that, granted, it's gotta go out to the head, but our projected costs are equal to our projected revenues.
No, no.
And, and that makes me very comfortable. And, and we've got to manage the cash flow, and I'm very comfortable deciding to manage that cash flow with C O P rather than TRAM.
Right. Although the TRAM would be easier to do on a lower amount, just cash flow wise, even if we have to do it over a six-year period to catch up, you know.
But it'd actually be higher.
How did that, the TRAM?
The TRAM, TRAM would actually end up in a higher amount of borrowing.
We'd be borrowing more.
Than the COP.
Over, over that period.
And it also restricts your bid.
Nine million.
Correct. And, and based on the timing and when you have to put up money, if I understand it, it would adversely impact our ability to use the operating reserves.
Correct.
And there's the cost of each one.
You have to set aside fifty percent of it immediately?
Twice a year.
Twice a year?
It just, it's, it did work.
And there's a cost of each one.
Yeah, and you're paying interest on each time you're doing it, so.
Yeah, and every time you have to pay it back, then suddenly you're having to borrow that money the next week.
Yeah, it's paid off.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Another comment about this. Um, um, all the residents that I meet, talk to, talk about this and financing. I've talked them through the amount of money that we have in reserves, these kinds of figures. And that, the value engineering that we cut four million plus out, out of it. And that we're really ready to go, we have a little cash flow, um, uh, problem just because we only get our money twice a year from property taxes. They understand that and that we may have to do some short-term borrowing. And they go, fine, just get it done. Put a shovel on the ground, hit go and do it and do what you have to do.
Get it done.
When that time comes. And they just want us to do it. Then I honestly do not believe we need an advisory vote. People don't...
How come we're not...
Yeah, I know that you're talking about it, but she is. But she can talk about the funding issues, she can't talk about votes.
Yeah, the residents say just do it, so I apologize.
And just to be clear, I blew the horn on that too.
I heard, I heard, I heard the horn.
So, do we get an action on this?
There's no action.
No.
Actually, there is discussion.
See you guys tomorrow.
Didn't matter, assignment for COP.
So that was number four, right?
Yes, we're done. We're done. Thank you, guys. See you tomorrow?
Marty, good job.
Tomorrow lunch.
Marty, good job.
Shall we call, uh, call online?
Thank you, everybody.
I think he went to bed. He thought we'd be done at this third.
Uh, Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, um, since my assistant is the expert on the next item, I would be happy to seat the chair and leave.
Oh, well, thanks.
I don't think anybody will complain, um, but Jen, I mean, Jen is the expert, so.
Nobody's complaining. She's a lot nicer than you, Marty. No, there's not more time. But it gives me ideas that I wanted to do, so.
I think you should.
I think so. I'm sure you appreciate it. It's just not enough time, but they're right. Well, I'm taking you to get home.
Something has to like to know if you want to know. Yeah, the public wants to know.
Twenty-four?
Oh, it's not bad.
This hour? Yeah.
What's left on me?
Since I know nothing about the college.
Is it just to go forward with the contract?
Yeah, it was a lot.
Discussion and direction and amendments.
Are you gonna sit out there in the public or make a comment? No, 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 I have a two and a half hour drive, so. Actually, at this hour, at this hour, it might only be a two hour drive.
Oh, drive safe.
Yeah.
That's a time restriction.
I'm gonna go drink that bottle of wine that's sitting on the desk. And then I have to...
I'm sorry, you're not allowed to sit without wine. Manhattan's are okay.
They were still there on, on Friday. Just for the record, since Mike lives or accused from the last item, he's on his way. He, he actually, he lives right at the council chambers. So he's on his way down.
No, he lives in his car compartment.
He's pretty close.
So that's who that was.
Uh-huh. No, I'll let you.
No, no, I mean, how long have I been carrying you?
I know, I know. Leave me, leave me out of it.
It's just for Rick and Elizabeth and Mike.
What?
What's that?
This next item is for you.
Oh, because you already know that.
Yeah, he put all the compensation.
And I'm not here to influence you at all. She said for us, his name is John.
Yeah, they gotta get him. He probably fell asleep.
I didn't know we were gonna spend so much time on this.
First I couldn't break.
You complained your life's better.
I should've guessed. All right, so we wanna go about this now, because we're supposed to be done in one minute.
I got spoiled.
So just for, just for the reference, the parent just refused to use the, you know, the... They've had it for twenty years.
Who's the, you need part of this, right?
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
They're not animal, they're just letting them.
They can say, yeah, why do they need COPs? How, why do they need COPs? They got...
Because they have so much money on them.
They don't want to...
They're just not animal.
COPs are a standard finance tool.
And the one often we look at, most often used, you don't have to go to a...
Do they go out for like a size or reload?
Well, the other one is the, uh, lease finance agreement. Oh, that's, that's it. Yeah, lease finance agreement.
It's a form of COP. Well, that's what we're... Certificates of participation.
Because I was, was before we did the, uh, lease revenue finance agreement.
You're leasing to yourself, right?
But the problem is, is that the asset thing we really do.
All right, let's go on to number twelve, which is the discussion and direction to the city manager and the city attorney with regards to the amended and restated franchise agreement between the town of Atherton and Recology of San Mateo County for recyclables, organics, material and waste, solid waste collection services. So, George and Janet.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of the council. Um, as you know, I'm part of the SPWMJPA. And there is a ten-year contract between us and Recology that expired in December of 2020. Within the contract requirements, there was a being conferred process by which the SPWMA, a member agencies via a advisory team developed an amended and restated franchise. That's what's in your packet tonight. Uh, the assistant city attorney and the city council subcommittee, and myself and Robert, all sat down with Recology folks and hammered out amendments to that agreement that specifically addressed Atherton's needs. Uh, and then there are grayed out sections, one of the amendments was to gray out sections of that franchise agreement within your packet that don't really apply to the town, but they're part of the larger franchise, so as you read through it, you didn't have to read through all those gray sections. You could just read through the others. So, all of the, the legal issues connected to it have been worked through and vetted through by our city attorney's office quite extensively and with Recology and their legal staff. Uh, you have a list of those items that were discussed within the staff report. There are also a number of policy issues, uh, that the council could discuss this evening. And that is more related to the town and its connection and membership within the SPWMA. Do we, are we a continued good fit with the SPWMA? The demographics and land use demographics and some of the other member agencies are dramatically here within the town, as you know. What's the benefit of staying in the SPWMA, cost of leaving the SPWMA? None of those things have anything to do with the franchise agreement between us and Recology. Uh, the issues with respect to the franchise are the term of the franchise, it's currently fifteen years, is the projection for that. Uh, and then, um, we have options there with respect to, uh, remaining with the SPWMA or bidding it out for a competitive service for trash services as well. So the staff report goes through some of those things in detail. Um, membership fit, discussed that a little bit, cost benefit of leaving the SPWMA, we talked about that in there as well. There is some debt service to have bond that the town would have to pay if we exited the JPA. And there's some conversation around equity issues with respect to our ownership as a member of the SPWMA in those facilities. The term of the franchise, it's fifteen years. So in that fifteen years, the costs of that are expected to total up to nearly fifty million dollars over that time period. Those are the costs of that contract. And that's if they stay flat. If they escalated three, four, five percent per year, those costs could be considerably higher. Uh, so, and when you look at the franchise agreement itself, it is a fifteen-year franchise. Uh, the foreign markets for recyclables just kind of doesn't exist anymore. Uh, unless those recyclables are cleaned up considerably so that they would accept them. Um, some of the other issues that came up are, what about other options for the town? And that's, that was looking at Woodside Patrol Valley, what do they do? They're comparable land use communities to the town. So you received via your Friday email a copy of what their contract amounts were for, for solid waste recycling, your green waste, which is their vendor. Uh, I talked further with each of those agencies, city manager's staff. And they extended their franchise agreements to June of 2020 to allow them to decide, and they actually hired a consultant to assist them, to decide whether they want to just renegotiate their individual franchises or whether they want to go out to a competitive bid. And so theirs expires in June of 2020. They have two council subcommittees along with staff that meet on a regular basis. They're not part of the JPA, they're independent. And so the question was, maybe we could, you know, sit down with them and see if they might be interested. Their timing's a little short, shorter than ours. And, uh, so they would have to have things complete by December of 2019 in order for them to do the transition with their new hauler. That puts us on a very tight timeline and that puts pressure on them to decide whether or not they would want to stick with us. They offered up, city manager did at least. If the council's interested in doing, or seeking some information from them, maybe our subcommittee, review subcommittee can meet with their subcommittees and talk about the value of us joining with their consultant or talking with their, their franchisee about an amendment to the franchise. My guess is they, they might not be leaning in that direction, given their timeline and the cost involved. And I think, I'm probably kind of wrong, Jennifer, but if they were to add us, they couldn't just add us to their franchise agreement and pick up, start collecting the town's waste. It would actually, so they couldn't amend their franchise to do that. That would actually be a, need to be a competitive one. They'd have to go out to rebid their franchise, they couldn't amend and renegotiate with their current hauler. They'd have to do a competitive process, which is a longer process, you know, meet their timeline. So they might not be as interested in it, but it's council, so we can at least attempt to talk to them if you want to go in that direction. So, and then the other issue was Stanford, I looked into Stanford as well, provided some information on what their process is and hauler is and what their rates are. They have both an external hauler and an internal recycling department that's been around since the mid-seventies or so. So kind of an in-house thing, and they got buildings and facilities that they manage internally as well. That concludes the staff report. Happy to answer any questions? And then in the audience, you've got, uh, representatives from the SPWMA as well as Recology, if you have any Q and A that you wanna address to them. And then two experts in the group, in the form of the mayor and council member.
Any questions?
So of all the member agencies, and I think we may have said it in the staff report, the JPA that we, uh, we belong, have they already had their contract?
Everybody but the county.
Ten of the twelve.
And the county is scheduled for January?
They're still doing some final due diligence on this and I don't think they've actually scheduled it yet. But it is, they are expecting to address it at the board of supervisory level.
Uh, follow-up, have those, uh, member agencies, uh, renegotiated any terms that would be, uh, separate and distinct from the terms that are being presented?
That's okay. Good evening, Mister Mayor, Mister Vice Mayor, fellow council members, Mister Rodericks. Um, no, the, the template that was provided, um, had eighteen different sections that were mostly administrative in nature, uh, that were, that allowed for modification. Uh, so, uh, there were some minor things along the way that were non-substantive on some of the elective services in attachment Q. Uh, those are not regulated by Prop 218. Um, uh, so, to my knowledge, that's, that's where it is. Sure.
Um, in our, our ten-year contract is coming to a close.
Yes.
Two years. In two years.
In, in, well, twenty twenty, right?
January first, twenty twenty-one.
December thirty-first of twenty twenty is the conclusion of the current, yeah.
Um, and so you're proposing a fifteen-year contract now and why is that?
Um, we are not proposing it, that is what's been negotiated through almost a year-long process of discussion. Um, that discussion included extremely comprehensive and, and, um, uh, robust, um, uh, negotiation of costs, comparison of costs. There was a full-blown operational audit of the Recology, um, operations. The results were then benchmarked and compared to industry standards and local standards. Uh, there was a peer review of that. Uh, that, we looked very carefully at rates in the marketplace, in the local marketplace and how our member agencies matched up with those. And through that very exhaustive process, that also involved, um, a number of interactions with a subcommittee that consisted of several city managers, several Department of Public Works directors, uh, several, a finance, uh, director. Um, that was all vetted and, and then presented to the board. We had a number of workshops in the community for our city managers, for the, for the, uh, the city attorneys. Trying to remember the steps here, spent a little bit. It, it was quite exhaustive.
And does that include, do you get some new trucks?
Yeah, the entire fleet, uh...
Gets, uh, upgraded?
Yes, the, um, uh, as part of this, and that's actually a very large part of, of, you know, the step up in, in some of the costs that we're looking at. Um, you know, a, a collection fleet, um, has a lifespan, just like any capital asset. And, um, on the books, this, this current collection fleet that we have of about a hundred and forty-five vehicles, they range from four hundred thousand dollars each, I think on the low end. Some of the more simplistic equipment could be two fifty-ish, so two fifty to four hundred thousand. Um, all of that is expected, typically has a ten-year depreciation cycle to it. So all of it is on the books to depreciate out at the end of this term. So all of it is on the books to depreciate out at the end of this term. However, Recology made a very interesting proposal, and after we vetted it, we agreed with them, that they have very high preventative maintenance and maintenance standards on this equipment. So while it's on the books to depreciate at 10 years, in fact, they feel very strongly that it could roll out a number of years beyond the 10 years. So that was one of the big discussion items in terms of looking at a 10-year renewal or a 15-year renewal. By going 15 years, the agency gets the benefit of essentially having two fleets and not a third fleet because they can go deeper into that second term with that. The other notable benefit to that is at the time that we start transitioning the fleet over, we have some meet and confer language in there to talk about alternative fuels. That was a big topic.
Next question.
Yes, and you know, that was a big topic. We're all very excited about the topic, but I think we all recognize that there is so much innovation going on, and actually right here in the valley with a lot of electrification, et cetera, that we just all sort of collectively did a timeout on that topic and said, let's put that over here. When the time comes, we'll, we'll get a sort of an advisory committee of both parties, the Recology team, SBWMA, and any technical representatives we might have. We'll sit down, we'll meet, we'll confer, and we'll spec out what the next generation of this equipment is. And that's a pretty exciting prospect. So that transition starts between 2020 and 2026. So by the end of 2026, the entire fleet will have changed over. And that would take us through December 31st of 2034, which is, which is the new end of the term. So, so.
I'll go after you on that. Say something. So first, I just feel like the service that we've gotten from Recology's been excellent. No, absolutely no complaints about it. Very professional and timely and well done. The issue that for me is that there is a difference between Atherton and most of your other JPA members in that we probably only have one commercial entity in town and a very small municipal entity compared to many of the other JPA members. And obviously, in picking up the three different types of garbage, there's very different treatment for residential customers than there are for multi-unit dwellings and for commercial customers. And so I've looked at the pricing, the, the garbage-related pricing that residential customers in Portola Valley and Woodside pay, and they're substantially less than we are paying. And so the issue, and I know you guys have talked about this, but the issue for me is, well, we've got plenty of customers that Recology is servicing that are multi-unit and commercial customers in larger municipalities in the other JPAs. And there's obviously costs related to that, different treatment and, you know, to do, and I'm sure they're all served as well as we are served. They're just different than we are. And those costs come into the mix. And so I, I went through the contract to try to understand the contract in terms of, well, how are these costs allocated? Which is section 10 and 11 of the contract. And they both are heavily dependent on attachments M, K, and N, none of which are attached. So I have no idea how the costs get structured. And I haven't talked to George about this because I just went through the contract tonight. But I guess the, the bottom line, and I'd like to understand that if we had an hour to go through it because it's really complex.
It is.
And, but I think the bottom line for us is how much of the costs do you, as the manager of the JPA and therefore each of the entities that are contracting separately with Recology have, in, in a general agreement, how, how much of, I mean, are the costs completely segregated between multi-unit dwelling and commercial? Or is there, is there expense bleeding across those areas such that, you know, red, to some degree residential are subsidizing some of the costs of multi-unit dwelling and commercial?
Yeah.
That's sort of the key issue.
Yeah. You bring up a very wide scope of discussion items. I'll, I'll address the first one relating to the, the rate structure that the citizens in Woodside and Portola Valley are enjoying. I can't speak to that. I'm not in any way involved in that, so I'm just gonna, if you don't mind, I'll move on to the part that I do know. And, and I can tell you, every year in April and May, there is an operational snapshot of all lines of business that Recology and all of the ancillary services for handling of the materials, once they drop it off at the facility and processing and going on there. All of that, that data is, is, goes through an operational audit and what we call the snapshot, and that database becomes the basis for all of the compensation, discussion and allocations from that point on. So there's, each truck has a computer on it, so there is the ability to track where the material came from and how, how it gets credited back, so to speak, within this, this pretty large system. It's, it's, it's a mouthful there. And so from, from the April-May operation Snapchat, snapshot, that data flows into the system. It gets presented to us at the agency for technical review on June 15th of each year. And at that point, we do a deep dive and we, we look at a number of factors. First one is just as a cursory first cut, we go through every number in that document, and the document's about like yay. We go through every number, every calculation and verify and validate it to make sure that, that it's, it's, it's a proper number, that we can have a respectful conversation from that point on. We then go through a very comprehensive review and validation of the costs that are presented. They are presented by line of business. So you could have a line of business for garbage and you have a residential line, a multi, or a commercial line. You have, you know, hang, hang on just a second. Mike, how many other businesses do you have?
Well, lines of business, we have...
Oops, excuse me. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. I kind of turned pretty quickly there. Mike Kelly is the General Manager of Recology, so.
Good evening. We have really four, three lines of business in each service sector. Service sector is determined by residential, commercial, or the city facilities. We call that member agency. So we have three service sectors. And inside each service sector, there's mainly three lines of business, which would be MSW, you would call it garbage. MSW is municipal solid waste, recycling, and organics. Also listed in there, which are, are small costs, but would be on the residential side, would be the bulky item collection line item, which is a small cost in there, as well as a battery collection line item, again, a small cost. And then on the multifamily side, in the commercial line of business, there's also a bulky item collection side and roll-off or debris box collection line item in that. And that's, the debris box is only in the commercial line of business.
So multi-sector. Unit dwelling is included in commercial?
Correct.
So if I could just sort of capture that, thank you, Mike. If I could capture it, we're getting into the weeds a little bit on this, and there's a lot of weeds to get into with this topic. But what I'm trying to communicate is the information is sliced and diced a lot of ways, and, and the end result of that process is the costs are allocated back out on, on sort of two levels. One is on a proportionate level of the member agency to the whole of the jurisdiction, of the entire service area. And then there's also the allocation back out by line of business. So if you, Atherton, have one commercial account or a hand, I think there's a handful here, but the point is, is well-made. It's, it's quite modest. You're going to pay a proportional amount of that line of business as it relates to Atherton. And somebody like Menlo Park or, you know, one of the bigger cities that have different characteristics to them, they're going to pay their proportional share too, which is going to look a lot different. It's going to be a much different number for them. They're going to bear the lion's share of those costs. So that process goes through the summer. The results, excuse me, are then presented at a technical advisory committee meeting. Mr. Rodericks serves on that, on that committee and in fact is a former vice chair of that committee. So your city's extremely well represented by, by Mayor Whitmer, who is also a two-time chair of our, of our board, and Mr. Rodericks. You have very deep dive knowledge of the operations of what we go on and it's, it's great to have that. And then all of that is vetted at that meeting. It's presented, the findings go out for comments back and forth a couple of times, and then they're presented to our board for a final review and for consideration at the September board meeting. So that's, that's the annual process. But I think the real core of what you were talking about is the allocation part of that. And it is formulaic in the sense that it's, it's on a proportional basis. So if, if you don't have multifamily, you're not paying for multifamily programs on that sense.
And how do the rates, just to follow, how do the rates compare for your other member agencies who do have substantial numbers of commercial entities? Like, how, how are the residential rates in Redwood City?
Right.
Or San Mateo compared to Atherton?
Yeah. Compared to Atherton, they probably are less. I'm doing this off the top of my head. In fact, I know they are.
It's not probably, you know, Joe, it's about a third.
They are, they are less. There's no question. Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to be coy about that. It's just hard to remember everybody's rates. Yeah.
Can I posit the reason potentially why? I mean, they, they have high density with social.
Yes, that is correct.
It's a, it's a function of a critical mass. I mean, they just have 50, they have 50,000 people in, in need of 5,000 people.
Well, they have businesses.
Well, we have, but, but we have 2,500 parcels.
And perhaps Recology could have better answered that question. Took a great comparison, but of, of the agencies they serve.
Right.
But I'm sorry, I was going to go somewhere else with that too.
Yeah. Well, if I could.
That's all true, that seems to be in good sense, but then you say, okay, if we're more like Woodside and Portola Valley, why are their rates lower?
Yeah.
There's some reason that.
If he answers density on one side and it's not on the other, there's something out of our, there, in Recology, you could probably better answer that question.
Then I do have a thought on that as well.
And then we set the rates and those jurisdictions set the rates.
We, we control the rates.
We control costs and the agencies.
We control the rates based on the charges that we're pursuing.
They set the cost and he set the rate. That's right.
Truthfully, when, when we looked at the cost of service in Atherton, what we noticed is they are generally higher on the MSW and recycling, and that is due to the density. We can service more customers quickly in a Redwood City or, or Menlo Park just due to the size of the units. There's shorter distance between, and we can just get more units picked up in the same amount of time. Secondarily, and probably the bigger cost driver is the two carts for organics. Atherton's allowed two carts for organics and all the other jurisdictions we service only have one. So what, what we noticed is there is a larger cost on the, on the organic side than there compared to other member agencies.
That's why we have, we have more than two carts.
Standards, correct. Standard services to two carts.
Yeah, that's right. Just a couple other thoughts in the general discussion sense. The, the point that was just made a moment ago, as a general rule in our industry, anything that affects productivity is going to have a direct driver and a direct correlation to price. That's just the facts. I can tell you that when we were doing our rate review, we recognized that the town of Atherton, the city, the town of Hillsborough, Hillsborough are both very comparable in terms of composition and the geographic characteristics of the cities. So there seems to be some, some parity in the rate structure in those two jurisdictions as opposed to the other 10 jurisdictions. They're just, they're different. They, in that sense, and I do remember us, although I don't have it right in front of me, there was a, a breakout of other like communities in the Bay Area, and there was probably another two or three others in addition to Atherton and Hillsborough. And they were all kind of in that same range. So there's, there's some issues that affect productivity. The issue of green waste was a common issue, extra green waste was a common issue. Larger properties generate more green waste. That, that is a fact. So again, a certain set of cost drivers there. There's a set of elective charges, I'm not going to go deep in, into that, but, because it, it doesn't factor into the base rates. But the nature and the size of those properties oftentimes results in special charges on an elective basis. You may choose to have the Recology crews come into the yards and go through a gate and, and go a distance. And, and again, anything that affects productivity is going to result in that, so.
We don't have any backyard.
Yeah, oh, okay. So I was just speaking in general. Hillsborough has lots.
The owners charge, they're charged for that. Unless they're over 75 or the, we said in the earlier.
Right, right.
Or disabled.
Mr. Mayor, a question for, uh, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong here, but there are three components that go into our rate revenue requirement. One is the basic cost for Recology services.
Correct.
The other is our franchise fee, and the third is the cost overhead for the SBWMA. So those are the three components that build our rate structure.
Yeah, but the SBWMA costs, you know, Joe and his staff, this is small staff.
We're a sliver of them.
Okay, so, but what they do, it gets rather complicated, but Recology is a contractor to SBWMA. The SBWMA owns the facility and the equipment that is up in San Carlos. And then there's a company called SPR, and they run the facility on behalf of us.
That's correct.
That sorts the trash or moves it, and then they also then truck it. So there are these trucks that go to Tracy or Half Moon Bay or wherever. Depending on what we're recycling. And then there, the SBWMA, Joe's staff then also negotiates contracts on behalf of the jurisdictions for either disposal of the solid waste, putting it in the ground, or shipping the green waste out to a compost facility, or shipping C and D to another facility, or shipping, you know, bottles out to a glass recycler.
Factory, yeah.
And then also the, the fiber, meaning cardboard, paper, et cetera, where they used to then put it, extend it to Oakland and it went to China, but now that issue with the commodities there, you know, some of it's going to Vietnam and things like that. But we're also trying to clean it up. So there's a myriad of things that are associated that go into the rates that we do look at. Joe was correct. We, we start, just like we start here in March, we start there in April, and we go through the, the calendar. And then, you know, we have a finance committee meeting and we look at not only the numbers, but we look at also the compensation each year. SPR as well as Recology put together what adjustments they think that they need to have based on today. It's the federal CPI. And, you know, in the future, that's going to change a little bit. As well as SPR does that thing, the same thing, plus SPR has a special deal since they use VRS people from the county to run the factory, that there was an agreement that that would be passed through, the rate increases that the county passed to bring things up to a living wage.
The living wage, yeah.
And so that, that all goes into what the numbers are. And then on top of that, of course, there's, just like here, there is capital equipment. Now, getting to Rick's comment, the capital equipment though, I mean, we're looking at things like today, we understand that these other jurisdictions aren't at the same level of diversion as we are. Okay, we're in the 80s, mid 80s for diverting.
Which is phenomenal, by the way.
Right, thank you.
Want to give you a shout-out.
But the other jurisdictions are not at the 75% mandate that the, the state requires them to be at by 2020. And so, you know, the, the board, in our regional view, we are... we are very, very interested in what can we do to either resort the, you know, the material or bring in additional capital equipment so that primarily information or, or trash that comes out of these large apartment buildings and people don't carry down three and four bags of different stuff to put in the different, you know, colored containers. All of it essentially goes into one big gray container. And so one of the things we're talking about and we spoke about this when we met, what, March, March a year ago, was going from, today we have multi-stream, we have three different buckets to go to, for the, especially for these commercial areas, a single stream processing where all the trash will go in one location, get on conveyor and then it would be sorted out. There's benefits to doing that. One of the benefits is that we want to look at, can we take organic food from restaurants, cafeterias or even from households and then ship that off to, for example, Silicon Creek, Silicon, yeah, I, Silicon Valley-
Clean water, yes.
Or, or other locations where they have these anaerobic chambers and what they do is they put a vacuum in there and they decompose very, very quickly the organics and turn it into methane gas. And so we're always looking at how can we get to more of a zero waste, as close to a zero waste as we can. That takes capital equipment and that cost goes into the overall facility's cost that bond is paid for and that potentially there'll be an expansion of the bond we talked about.
Sure.
Uh, so there are costs that do leach over because in the facility, there's not necessarily cost tracking or allocation application. But, but in the pickup, yeah, they do, Recology puts a report out every, every month. We get from GNO, a mission report that shows how much our diversion rate, what all the other organizations' diversion rate is, how much is solid waste, how much is recyclables, et cetera, et cetera. And then SPR tells us where we are on the commodities market, so. For anyone, so it's a very detailed process and, and Joe and, and Johnson Beckers, the funniest director-
My colleague, yeah, my colleague John Man- John?
Do a great job in working with us, so.
Yeah.
Let's, I hope I didn't steal too much of your thunder. But that's kind of an overview of what we do.
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's a very accurate and impressive, I wish every, everybody could give that kind of an overview and, and it demonstrates Mayor Whitmer's, you know, granular understanding of, of our situation.
Mr. Mayor, great. First of all, I wanna second what Rick said about, I think our service is very good. I also think it would be very fortunate to have Bill and George being so actively involved. But there's a structural issue that I think Rick mentioned, which is we are different. We're in many ways similar to those, but we are different. We're different in the year 2018, but the year 2034, I think we're gonna be very, very different. And I just wonder what kind of governance there is in here so that somebody's watching out for our interests. I don't mean the JPA's interest, I mean Atherton's interest when the pricing goes on. I'm not clear whose job it is to make sure that Atherton's not being taken advantage of in this process as, again, you roll this forward and its EPA develops, everybody's developing and we're not.
Right, if, if that's a question, I'd be happy to feel- Well, the governance structure consists of an elected member of the community, of, of the council at the board level and then a senior level executive at the city level. And, and so whether it's Mr. Roderick's today and, and his replacement in the future and, and so on with-
Like a one to twelve.
Yeah, that is correct.
So we are always-
One to twelve, yeah, right.
And that's happened. To be honest, that has happened.
Sure. To make substantive changes in the structural aspects of the governance document, document, it's a super majority, so it's eight, to give you some more, more background.
If things continue to change and the census continue to grow, we will be frankly less important to the structural.
Yeah, similar to library JPA, but it's a different issue because the interests at the library level in terms of, you know, information, when, where you get that information are not that different. In this case, it looks like a really big difference. I mean, I understand the difference in terms of distance between properties and that creating the cost for Recology. I get that, but really, I think the, the key issue is to the extent that other communities that are quite different from us, much more multi-unit and commercial facilities, need capital equipment that will treat their garbage to be more effectively, whereas we can handle it ourselves pretty much and we're diverting eighty percent. We're obviously doing a pretty good job. But to the extent that that capital equipment has to be purchased by the operation as a whole and those costs get distributed out to the communities based on some metric, right? I mean, if it's headcount, it's gonna work against us.
Headcount?
Yeah, if it's headcount, it's gonna work against us.
It should be partial.
It's, well, it's not, it's what, the way it is is that, is, is, as Joe pointed out, you know, of course, they look at the tonnage that comes from our organization or our municipality. And then, you know, Joe mentioned that there's a four-week period of time that we do this audit. And you may remember, I brought that up when we were doing the Marsh Road work, you know, we didn't want that to impact.
Oh, yes.
So they, they run an audit and they look at the total man-hours that is allocated during-
Recology's hours.
Right.
Right, and then they use those hours to determine, you know, what percentage you should have. And so our numbers go up or down depending on-
What percentage of the capital equipment cost?
Of the, of the college cost.
Of the college?
It's the audit, it's the audit, it's the audit adjustment. It's the audit adjustment and, you know, we're normally in the six to six and a half percent range and it can vary based on the truck broke down or whatever. It's, it's a variable thing, it's not done over a period of time. And so sometimes the guys all run through all of, and they know the routes and it's the primary driver and other times the primary driver's out and you've got a secondary driver and he doesn't know his way around and he gets lost or his truck breaks down or there's a detour.
That's a new perfect.
Right, and so, but that's, but that's, that's the way it's been set up and so.
But what about the capital cost of this, if you're doing a review?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, but-
So the, the capital cost, when we go through that, that cost review every year, as, as, I mean, it's, it's unbelievable how many layers of this thing gets reviewed, the scrutiny of it. There are four major cost categories and nine subcategories that are, that are captured and then parsed out on an allocated basis. So again, in the example of residential recycling services, the operating cost and the fixed costs associated with that are captured in there and that's what gets allocated back. So if you're a big user of that, you're gonna pay a big part of that. If you're not a big user of it, you're not gonna pay a big part of it. So I think there, there might be a concern about the allocation process that may not be-
So, so just to follow up on that.
Sure.
So to the extent that there's some capital cost, because you have to buy some expensive piece of equipment that will segregate and divert the garbage into the proper category.
Okay, um, yeah.
If, if, if you've got an eighty percent diversion coming in, do you, and you've got somebody else who's got a sixty percent diversion, is that sixty percent?
No, no, I, I, I need to make a distinction, as you were saying that, it's your thought, forgive me. I was specifically referring to the collection side of the business, the Recology side.
No, but that's the Recology.
Yeah, the, the facility side, and, and I know that, that's one of Mayor Whitmer's key points that we've, we've talked about is those get allocated out on, on a straight cost per time basis. There, there's, there's no, there's no, and I need to be very forthright about that.
Cost per time, so.
That is correct.
That's a natural subsidization.
And they get, I'm sorry, sir.
Right, Joe and I have talked about it.
Oh, lots, yeah.
A lot, but I think that there should be an allocation based on the commercial tonnage and, and, you know, and we brought it up at the finance committee and of course, the same as you get at some of these other JPA things and say, hey, you know, that's the cost for the end of JPA.
Right.
Although I keep pushing it every time Joe and-
So, just kinda talking back about maybe the single stream option, even though that we may look like we're diverting eighty percent with our diversion, I have to tell you, I believe that our residents and all of the health residents, our domestic house cleaners and gardeners and people like that need more education about diversion and about separating. And so maybe our residents would love to have a single stream system that they wouldn't be coming out with three different things. So if that, if we were gonna be paying the cost of the, you know, super equipment to sort it anyway, but I think that our, some of our recycling needs to be sorted because I cannot get my husband to not fit stuff in the, in the balloon. Yeah, I'm the sorter, so I think I'd like those single streams.
I can relate, yeah, sorry.
That's my version, because I'm out there, I go to my gardener, my neighbors and-
Just a, a comment to you with regards to that. When we looked, when we looked at, I, I can't help you with your husband.
I know.
However, however, when we did the strategic plan a couple of years ago, the previous executive director, but the same operations manager, put together a deal and they said, is there a benefit of going single stream now that we have a multi-stream? And the answer is yes, but it's, it was at that time, without any additional information, it was only a, a one or two percent improvement. So it, it was the other organizations that will benefit more from that, but will there be some improvement? Yeah, of course, of course, especially the, but the, where we're trying to go, where we're trying to go with the single stream is to work in commercial, is to work in commercial areas like restaurants and things like that where we can take, where we know there's a large amount of organics that we can then use to go into this organics to energy project, which we have some funding for and we're planning on, we just voted to move ahead on that, on the five million dollar worth engagement to set up a pilot to test that out over the next couple of years.
So just a comment about the organics, that I own a retail shopping center in, in Alameda County and Alameda County has mandated-
Yes, they have.
That the owner of the shopping center has to provide an organic bin, a special to eat restaurant, we've got Chipotle, Starbucks, you know, Subway, you know, and, and make them put their, not the, in the front of the house, but the back of the house, all of their organics in it. Can we get them to do that? They will not do it. It is quarantine.
Well, it's a state mandate.
I was just, if, if I may. Yeah, there's a state mandate, there's escalating levels of implementation that are coming up in the next couple of years. The county of Alameda has taken an extremely aggressive approach on it, but it's, it's an approach that actually is gonna ripple back through all of us. So we're gonna have our version of that, we're just not quite taking it, you know, quite so aggressively at this moment. But we're gonna have our version of that, yeah.
State mandates.
Yeah, we love them.
And they're unfunded.
Yes.
So my, my, my two cents, if I could give you my, because I've been answering questions somewhat and Joe asked it, thank you.
Sure.
My two cents is, is this, you know, it's, it's kinda like the fire district discussion. It's, uh, we are the highest payer of all the jurisdictions. Hillsborough was lower than us by, at, at some of the top rates by twenty, twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars for a bin per month. And, but I think that Recology does a great job and there are benefits of being in the, in the, in the JPA. I think that Joe and his team are, are first class and they're, they're on top of the business and I think that we're one of the leading operations in here and, and the whole industry has been faced with some crisis with this regards to this silver sword from China, but. But just like with the fire district, you know, maybe we're paying, we may, we may be paying too much. Now, is it Recology's fault? No, I, I, you know, I, if we went to a different hauler, personally, I think that it would be ten or fifteen percent lower, maybe, depending on what they bid and what we require them to do. But even with, you know, there've been a lot of things that are in the contract that created risk for Recology and what they did is they de-risked them by putting them through as pass-through or we'll meet and confer. I mean, they're gonna say, hey, you know, like bulk items, which there's, there's an, an agreement addendum already in work to cover the bulk items because if you call today for a bulky pickup, you know, there's a period of time that they give you and, you know, and they have a separate truck that does that. Well, so many people are putting bulky items out or there's abandoned waste pickup that they need to buy another truck and hire another team and things like that. So they're negotiating that and Joe and his team are also figuring out, are we all gonna pay for it or just the people who use it? And so, and I've given our input, so, so hopefully that's gonna work out well. But there is gonna be a change to this contract coming, so. But, but Recology has de-risked this and put in, you know, some other changes like instead of using the federal CPI, we now use Silicon Valley CPI, which, you know, is gonna be a little bit higher, plus there's a pass-through on gas, which can work both ways. But, you know, just as, you know, George put through, you know, I don't know, the, the fit with our neighbors is the way. And, and, and just like what we've said with the fire district, is the fit really right for what we're paying? And, you know, do we really, should we really be here? Now, we've negotiated a contract and, and Joe and I and the attorneys have talked about it too. I mean, we've gotten as far as we can with Recology and I think that it was a fair negotiation. They gave in on some things and, you know, and other things we had to swallow. Not because we didn't try, but, um.
Voluble.
Yeah.
We didn't give up, did we?
But, but the contract we've got is kinda valid until December thirty-first. So we've got time to make this decision. And in fact, today's conversation, December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, correct.
Yeah, and so, so we've got some time and, and, but we've got the bid on the table. And so it doesn't hurt for us to go out and see if anybody else is even interested in what that cost would be. So I, you know, I, I think that what we should do is look at, you know, see if anybody else is cheaper and, and meet the quality standards that we've come to enjoy. But at the same time, also, you know, consider whether or not, you know, the total processing and see whether or not, if they can process it better. Now, a caution us that, you know, we're having a problem with China. It's not just us, it's, everybody's having a problem in China and it's at the ports. You know, the SPR owns the recycling plant for the fiber in China. It's their plant and we can't get the stuff from the port into their plant. That's what the problem is. The inspectors have been told, told to refuse anything, you know, try and find a way to say it doesn't meet the quality standards. So Joe and his guys and the SPR people work very, very hard to find other things. So all these other companies that are reprocessing stuff are, are doing the same thing. They're having to scramble because the commodity costs have gone from, you know, a lot to nothing, so. So my thought is, is that, you know, we should probably think about it and that's all we can do today anyway, because that's all that's on the couch, okay? But, you know, I would say, you know, bide our time and take a look and at least have a conversation other than just a quick phone call and see what these other guys have. That would be my recommendation to the council, but I'm just one person.
I have a comment about that recommendation. Would that, would staff have to do any of this labor for, you know, to kinda create RPs, request for proposals and send out stuff, analyze everything? My sense, I have to tell you, my sense is that our staff is stretched really thin. And the single focus that they need to be focused on is our civic center. Laser being not thinking about other issues like this. I think that the contract, I, I'm- I think that the contract, I, I'm, like I say, I'm happy with the recology service. I think that we have the ability to set rates, we may be paying more for the services, but we live in a special environment and I don't think that we want to create an environment in our town that would make us comparable to Redwood City.
No, but Hillsborough's paying thirty dollars less.
I don't believe that they get the service that we do. I really, I really don't believe it. It's not recology. Oh, Hillsborough, sorry, sorry, I thought you were saying, I was thinking Portola Valley and Woodside.
They should be getting the same service.
Does Hillsborough have that twenty-five dollars, is that, is their, the twenty-five dollar base?
Well, I look at their overall numbers are, you know, are, there's, there's like, their top rate is seventy-five dollars, our top rate is a hundred dollars.
But we have that twenty-five dollar minimum, I thought they had that.
They have a twenty-dollar minimum, I believe it is, but they also have that thing, they also bill their property tax.
Property tax, right, so it's separate from their rates.
Yeah.
So, is that plus the twenty-five?
Yeah, so it may not be that big of a savings.
Well, I think, well, we don't know, but George, you, you and I have talked about if we were to do something and I think Elizabeth brought up an excellent point about handling it. How would we do, how would we handle something?
So, it's not a burden on staff to check in with Portola Valley and Woodside and set up a meeting and at least have that conversation.
Well, that, yes.
That's relatively easy.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, you go out and, yeah.
Putting together an RFP to engage a consultant would be the thing that staff would have to do, to get that consultant on board to do the, help us with the bidding process.
Right.
We wouldn't do the bidding process staff level, we'd hire a consultant to do that.
And then we'd be using some of our, you know, our reserve funds.
Rate stabilization fund.
Stabilization funds.
Do that rate stabilization.
About thirty or forty thousand dollars.
I know, but I, I remember a time when we didn't have a rate stabilization fund and we had to come up with a lot of money when we transferred over. It was not a pretty sight.
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, right, so I, I would just be very cautious about making that the grass is greener at this point with another service provider because I'm just not sure who, who all is out there. I know that we'd say Portola Valley have green acres or something.
Green acres. And it's exactly what we had.
So, we're just discussing today, we're going to make a decision.
Yeah, we don't have any decision.
So, but we're providing staff some feedback, if you wanted me to look at Portola Valley.
That's what I'm going to say. So, what, what I would like to see is if you, I mean, we, we got what you sent out on Portola Valley and Woodside and you followed that up with the staff report from when we set our rates on the two different occasions, but it, it's very hard to compare. What would be very helpful would be to put together a chart that showed Portola Valley, Atherton, Hillsborough, Woodside and maybe two or three other Bay Area communities.
But we have, we have all of our, everybody that's in the JPA, those rates are published, they're probably getting those, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't bring them, but I can give them.
For us, I went on recology's website in preparation for this meeting to try to look at what the rates are and that they're not, there's, I couldn't get any rates on recology's website.
I haven't, I can get them to, but they're in the staff reports.
Sure.
What I want to see is a apples-to-apples comparison that includes Woodside, Portola Valley, whatever other communities are similar and, you know, based on these three streams of waste, just like they talked about.
For similar cities, I, we're not going to get apples to apples if we're comparing ourselves to Redwood City.
There, yeah. It's not Redwood City, but it's Hillsborough, Portola Valley, Woodside, maybe Ross, maybe.
Where would we get their rates that are on recology?
Unfortunately, even in the JPA, we are the only ones that charge for organic waste, the other guys do not.
So, that's a difference.
So, we've differentiated and tried to keep, we've, we have gone and distributed costs to the green carts, to the excessive green cart users.
Which is a smart thing to do.
To drop the cost on the black cans as low as we can get and, you know.
But, but our costs on the black cans are still higher than those other communities.
Than they are, that's, that's correct.
And we're paying for the green waste and they're not paying for the green waste.
Correct, correct. The green waste is included in their rates, which are lower than ours.
They don't use as much green waste.
Well, Hillsborough is very similar.
I would say.
Yeah, so, and plus, as I mentioned, so we already have a contract, okay? And, and if, if we wanted to go out and do some formal thing, there's enough, there's more than enough money in the rate stabilization fund to pay for the, without taking anything out.
That's maybe a hundred thousand dollar contract, because I would say no.
I don't think it, that's not what George has indicated.
That's just the swag on my part, some are between thirty and fifty, so, I don't know. What do we do in RFP?
Just to, just so I understand what you're talking about during earlier, I heard it says we can try to get a chart, it's really apples-to-apples comparing what people really spend.
Right.
And, and then at the same time, you're going to reach out informally to the cities of, of Woodside, Portola Valley and get a sense of whether we want to cooperate?
I, I would actually suggest setting up a meeting with our subcommittee and their subcommittees and actually have them talk about it to get real information.
And that could all be done when we came, when, when would it come back to the council in the next?
January, February.
Oh, that seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, okay.
Seems reasonable to me.
Carrie?
You're doing such a good job. You know, I, I'll, I'll just say, just very little because we're trashed out.
I admire you.
There are many other variables that are going to come into play even in the consideration of Portola Valley, Woodside because their agreements come up. And there's also a variable of the franchise cost peak because that's set by the jurisdiction. So, that's a variable factor we don't know. And I think that we as a town have already learned that there is a cost to doing business in Atherton, period, and it's not a justifiable amount, but it is what we give, part of bearing who we are. So, to try to stimulate a logic to some things, we're just never going to be able to get it. And like we've learned very quickly with the civic center, it's an eye-opening experience and sometimes we can never justify it. So, as we move along in the process, the county and recology have a philosophy of how to do recycling and so on and so forth, so it is a, a pretty big operation and that also will change based on the other jurisdictions or other companies that would even be interested in service. So, these are all things that I think we have to, you know, take into play as, you know, we make this decision. But it is a big agreement, it's at least a fifty million dollar agreement over the next fifteen years, so.
Well, I want to add, just so you know the magnitude, so it's about fifty million dollars if we're spaced out, okay? But there is escalations, I just told you some of that stuff. And I, I did do a pen and ink on the total contract with John, okay? He and I traded numbers and then over the fifteen-year period, the total contract, that means that's the processing, disposal, as well as the pickup, is seventy to seventy-five million dollars and I.
That's, that's Atherton's cost.
That's our cost.
That's our cost.
Now, recology is, is less than half of that and, and disposal costs going up and up and up and the other processing costs and extra equipment that we have to bring in to do certain things, you know, are going to skew that fifty-fifty to, unfortunately, recology would get less than fifty, but, but I, I had pegged that talking to, to John as well, thirty to thirty-eight million is what their part is, but they, you can't have not, you can't have recology and then not JPA, you know.
Those numbers, if you put them in comparison to our general fund, it's dramatic how much money that is. I didn't realize that it's, it's, it's a lot of money.
Big money.
That's why I suggested we.
Well, then our residents are paying.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they've gotten, they.
But our residents are paying for our operation too.
Right. It is, but, you know, it's, your garbage gets taken away, you know? And, 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 you know, it's not an extensive process to have your garbage taken away. What I would really like to see is green vehicles. So, if we can find another provider that has green vehicles, not painted green, but environmentally green electric vehicles that are like Teslas that don't.
Tesla.
Yeah, right, that don't make so much noise.
We were going to, we were going to have.
I might be persuaded to think it's unfortunate.
We were going to have the liquid, liquid gas tankers, we were going to have that this year or the next year, but the, the variable in gas had gone down and it kind of made it unfeasible and so now, but it is in the discussion item in this new contract is that that that's one of the things that they're going to consider. And one of the things could be that they would be using and fueled off the, the organics, the gas that, that we would develop out of our own organics, that's, you know, some of the things that are out there.
TMI, I know.
Yes.
Really.
Okay, fine, no problem. Well, okay, when we get in there, you know, you get it, you get it, okay.
Way TMI.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you guys.
No, I, I just will finalize and say there was a lot of work, I think as a jurisdiction, we probably spent the most time with you, you know? I mean, it's the subcommittee of torture, uh, um, subcommittee that spends a lot of time drilling down. So, you know, I just want to thank you guys for your patience with us and, you know, it's, it's been well worth it as far as we're concerned, so thank you.
All right, are there any council reports? No, I guess not.
In your chair.
Okay, any future items, we talked about one that you did, think about that. Public comments is Greg here.
Nope, he's still at, at the panel.
All right. Thank you guys.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Oh, should do a journal?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All right, I didn't miss.
Well, that's.
Now we're later.
Longest meeting of the year.